This conference will now be recorded.
Here we go, Kathy.
We're all ready, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Waukesha County Council meeting for April 7th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Byrd?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ben Ellenboss?
Here.
Carol Frazer?
Here.
Kathy Kirschner?
Here.
Thank you. We will start with the executive's report.
Okay. Good afternoon, council. I just want to start with that the Unified Commander, Bill Elfo, and myself, the county executive, have two main objectives right now. One is continuity of county government services, and the second is saving lives. Now, I would like to report that the protocols of social distancing and hand washing are working in Washington State and in Waukesha County. I'm fully aware that these could be better. They could be observed better by all the people, but nevertheless, it is making a difference, and we can all see that. The Unified Command is working to secure additional quarantine facilities, and I have shared in an email very recently, if you can check that, please, some of the cost estimate models which Unified Command has developed. The Unified Command team leaders have had discussions in last few days to bring a better flow of communication that is internal and external. Sheriff Elfo, Mayor Fleetwood, Chairman Buchanan, and I attended these meetings with several other staff people and incident commanders. Waukesha County Health Department is doing an excellent job in putting out the messages of prevention and preparedness to the public as well as the daily data on COVID-19. I would like to remind everybody that it's been four weeks today since local emergency was declared, and most of the EOC team has worked tirelessly in their new roles. This has been totally new to most of the people, and this disaster is new to all of us. We appreciate the help we have received from local refineries in kind, in cash, and in sending their specialists to the EOC to help manage our operations and use some of the tools and their expertise. The county department heads have implemented the new work schedules, like we sent the ordinances which I shared with the council last week, and many of the employees are working from home or they have been assigned to EOC on rotating shifts. So that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Sheriff Elfo, anything to add?
Yes. Last week when we spoke, as you know, the Unified Command system involves coordination and communications among various entities in what can be described as building joint consensus, decision-making, priority setting, and because it's a seven-day operation, it necessitates the rotation of agency representatives within the Unified Command. I continue to experience improvements to these processes and see that they're working. They continue to improve over weeks. However, from my perspective and that of some of the others involved in Unified Command is that a switch from, at least it's worth considering, a switch from a Unified Command structure to one involving a single incident commander who would oversee and direct the incident manager structure as a means to improve planning efficiencies, decision-making, communications, and execution. I envision that this incident command would report to an executive committee and be supplemented with key agency representatives who can provide jurisdictional and subject matter advice, and they may be the same folks that are serving primarily in Unified Command at this time. This would facilitate, in my view, perhaps returning more operational people who are desperately needed in times like this to be in their primary positions overseeing emergency operations and preparing for what I anticipate to be a very difficult upcoming budget process. The executive, as Sat Paul said, the executive, Sat Paul, Mayor Fleetwood, the council president, and my deputy director of emergency management have met several times over the past few days and vetted a number of variations under this structure which may be able to be accomplished. There's still some things to work out. I still see a lot of value in doing this with the city of Bellingham, where the hospitals are, where overflow hospitals are planned, and we're meeting again tomorrow, and hopefully we'll be able to come up with a consensus. And I also want to recognize the importance of keeping the health department intimately involved in this process aware as well, because primarily this is a health emergency, but it's also now a community emergency, a community crisis that's going to involve a lot of planning over the next few months. In addition to the incident commander, I would further envision that we should have, at least on a part-time basis to start, a person that would fly, maybe if the incident commander's at 30,000 feet, at 100,000 feet level, assessing the longer-term needs and associated strategic planning. For example, long-term financial impacts from incurred expenses and loss of tax revenues is going to be a big issue, and we need somebody out there looking ahead, forecasting that as we move into the recovery period. A lot of the expenses we incur are going to be reimbursable, but that's only if the paperwork is, if we have proper documentation and that documentation is properly submitted, and there's not much leeway for error in that regard. So we need to ensure that that's done as well and as competently as we can. I hope after the meeting tomorrow or perhaps one subsequent meeting, we'll have more to report on that.
Questions for Sheriff Elfo or the executive for this segment of our agenda? Councilmember Frazer?
If we, Sheriff Elfo, if we do choose a person to oversee the process, how would that person be hired?
We would look for someone that has experience with dealing with large-scale emergencies, a lot of experience on the ground. I would see that we would invite resumes. I would ask for financial authority or fiscal authority for the position, but I think under the current code, I have the authority to appoint someone to that position in consultation with the executive.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So I was looking into that very topic of how you would do it, and it seems to me that in your, in the comprehensive emergency management plan, it speaks of the executive being able to do that, Sheriff, but in our county code, it references you as the director. So it seems to me that the code and the comprehensive emergency management plan are somewhat in conflict with each other, and I did write something up that we could throw out there that would alleviate that by amending two words in our county code. So maybe, maybe we could have legal look at that, because from what I read, it looked like it would be cleaner and easier to just amend the code real quick and have, let's say, the director can appoint his or her designate.
If I could just interject, this is Karen Frakes. I think as long as they're working together, there's not a need to amend the code, and I think it would be more efficient just to have them both work together.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions for Sheriff Elfo or executives to do for this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to AB 2020-116, update on COVID-19. This is the council acting as the health board, and there's one thing we want to move, if it's okay with the council. Item number six is a proclamation about public health. We'd like to move that up first so we can get that done, and the health department can get back to work so they don't have to wait through the entire agenda. So Erica, let's just start there, and then we can go into your update. Go ahead, Erica. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay. So every year nationally, we celebrate our employees in various health departments and serving in public health roles all over the country in what we call National Public Health Week, and that is this week. It started yesterday, and generally, there is a different focus on public health areas each day, like maternal and child health or environmental health, preparedness, et cetera, but given that, given that we are in the midst of a public health crisis, it seemed appropriate to really just focus on recognizing and honoring the work of employees within this health department and who play public health roles around our community. So in that vein, I presented the proclamation/recognition for your consideration.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Brown moves, and Mr. Donovan seconds. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to compliment Erica on timing the National Health Week to be this particular week.
I wish it was a slow week, Rod.
Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Kathy Hawke, please call the roll.
Carol Frazer?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Okay, Erica, we'll go ahead and go into your update.
Great. I have a number of updates, but first, because he is in my office, ready to go, I'd like to bring Tom Kunisch, who's our food safety supervisor, up to brief you on the document that you received earlier today and the recommendations the health department has for your consideration regarding restaurants, bars, and nightclubs. Okay, I'm going to have him come up.
Pardon the mask. I am practicing good public health here. Thank you for your attention. A while back, Erica had expressed to me, after a conversation with individual council members and executives to do, the desire to try to provide some sort of relief for businesses, food businesses specifically, that have been affected by the governor's order to close dining rooms, indoor seating areas at food establishments. So she had me run, Erica had me run some numbers, at least for council consideration, and together, we put together a few suggested options, and those are the things that you have in front of you right now. I will just stop talking at that point and, at this point, and ask if any of you have any questions that I can answer for you.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
I really appreciate the work you did on that. I think it's probably much needed relief. My question would be to the council, to take action on this, what do we need to do? Do we need an ordinance, or can we just recommend implementing one of the options that were out there, or do we need to introduce it and do it in two weeks?
I'll let Dana or Karen Frakes answer that question.
I don't have a copy of it, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Dana?
I don't know how to answer that question, actually. I need to look at it, because I'm not sure if this, if the language that Tom's talking about and Erica are talking about was in the code. I was working on something else when you just started that discussion, so I didn't pick up on it. I'll go back through and look at Erica's email and then hope to have an answer for you in a couple minutes.
Okay, I was going to suggest that. Councilmember Ellenboss, and then Frazer?
I was just going to say that if you read the RCW, health board gets to set rates, so I'm assuming that it would be absolutely appropriate for us to take action on it. I guess, I'm wondering if it's, if we only need to take, make a recommendation to the health department, and then the health department implements it, or if we actually have to have something written in front of us, because personally, I like, I have an option that I would prefer to see us implement, but we probably need to have more than an hour to look at the document and probably need to have some discussion on it.
Councilmember Frazer, then Donovan?
So my question is, so the health department receives $711,000 from the permit fees, and, and most of that, it says, goes to the staff and education, and I was wondering, since most of the people now, it says, are working with the Unified Command, then would their salaries be paid by FEMA or like when we submit that, and so that money would not be needed to pay those salaries? Is that correct, Erica?
So I think all but Tom and one other staff have been diverted to COVID activities, and actually, I have good news. About a half hour ago, we received $252,000 from the state. All local health jurisdictions received funding from the state for COVID activities, and that $252,000 would, would help pay for all the staffing costs that are dedicated to that COVID cost center, which includes the environmental health staff that are now not doing restaurant inspections but are working on COVID. So yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, this is maybe for Karen Frakes or Dana and/or Tyler Schroder. Are we talking about stuff? I think it's a great idea. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how we can get it done. Is this fee schedule stuff? Do we have to change the fee schedule, and can we do that out of whatever the normal cycle we usually do, or do we, or would we need like an emergency proclamation if it is something that's embedded in the fee schedule?
Yeah, so Tyler Schroder, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Deputy Executive Tyler Schroder, my understanding is, is these are established by the unified fee schedule, so there's a couple of different paths forward for the council. The council could make a motion of support of implementing the fees as outlined by the health department, and in that situation, the executive would make an executive order to update the unified fee schedule to be consistent with that, and at the same time, we would bring forward an ordinance to introduce for council's consideration at a future council meeting to make it permanent for the duration of this.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Okay, so I would move that we do just what Tyler said. However, there are three options, so I think maybe we should discuss the three options and then, and then maybe we'll move what Tyler just said, because that sounds incredibly reasonable to me, and this is absolutely relief that businesses in our community are going to need, because it's not their fault they're not open. Personally, I like the one that ended up costing us 300 and some thousand bucks deferred, but because I feel like grocery stores and convenience stores are probably doing all right in this, maybe even better than normal, but the restaurants, they're going to need some, they're going to need some love.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to offer, in my research for this, I did uncover that, well, I know that the fees are established in ordinance, so the amount of the fees are established each year in the UFS. The last time the UFS was, for the unified fee ordinance, last time that was passed was 2018, November of 2018. That establishes the amount of the fees with respect to food service. The county code, 24, chapter 2403, I think, sets the term for permits, and if you're considering extending the term, you might have to look at the county code as well. So I'll just offer that.
Mr. Donovan, I think you were next.
Yeah, I think if we can just come up with some simple language that we recommend that the executive work with Mr. Kunisch or however you want to do this, to come to us with an ordinance with the proper fee schedule and code changes required to bring about this regulatory relief, something like that. Does that work as a motion?
If you say so, if that's your motion.
Yeah.
Say it again, so Kathy.
Okay, I move that Tom Kunisch, health department, and the executive's office work together on the, take these recommendations and bring them back to us as a proposed ordinance and/or changes to the fee structure.
Do we have a second? Who seconded?
Ellenboss.
Okay, Ellenboss second. Okay, first was up Mr. Ellenboss, then Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask, are we having a meeting on Thursday? Is it something we could get in front of us on Thursday, or is it something that we're looking for down the line?
We're going to be talking about meeting schedules in a few minutes as well, so I guess we'll hold that thought until then, as far as the Thursday thing goes, but anyway, discussion on the motion. Mr. Brown?
So Tom, is this, forgive me, I'm just going to go ahead and wrap my head. Is the proposal just to extend the dates, or what were you thinking of?
Sure. So in terms of the options, I guess the simplest one is the last one, and that is to just waive late fees. So we understand that businesses' revenues are suffering, and we really feel like it's appropriate to just waive the provision in the unified fee schedule for late fees established for late payment of permits.
Okay.
So that's one option, not having to do with permit term. Other options, really, just to go through them one by one, extend the term of food operating permits for essentially three additional months. The effect of that would be to defer revenue from permits expiring the fourth quarter of this year into 2021, so we would lose that revenue, and you've got a projection of what that revenue would have looked like absent our COVID pandemic problem. Second would be to extend the permit term for all food establishment permits by six months, and you've got the revenue impact projection there as well. The third option is a little more nuanced, and it tries to get into distinguishing between businesses that are still operating but maybe at a reduced capacity and businesses that are closed outright, and that's a little hard to suss out, because we don't know how many restaurants are really trying to operate, and we don't really have a good sense of how their revenues are impacted. So anecdotally, I've spoken with dozens of operators who say, even if they're, even if they're working, they've still had to lay staff up, because there's no dining room open, so all of the waitstaff, all of the servers, and many of the other staff that support them, like dishwashers, there's just not as much need for somebody to be constantly moving through utensils like that, so they don't need the dishwashers. But in terms of telling you which restaurants are impacted, which restaurants are entirely closed and which are open under reduced operating conditions, I don't have that information for you.
So my point, the point I wanted to bring up to the council is, the governor has suspended, as best I can deal, several hundred sections of the RCWs, as I understand it, related to things like expiry dates on certain things or certain conditions that are affected by this, and a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the issue of simply saying that something like any permit that expires in the next 90 days, there will be no penalty, or it will be automatically extended for 90 days or something like that, but I think, I support doing this on the health department side, but I'd rather see it done universally across everything that we're doing to provide relief to everybody who maybe cannot comply simply because it's not a staff member, it's a system.
Kathy Kirschner, and then Tyler Byrd, and then Mr. Ellenboss?
I would support the motion. I'd ask if you would accept a friendly amendment to pick one of these options or, or a different option. I would, I would offer a friendly amendment that we pick the third option, so that restaurants and bars and clubs are being.
I saw a thumbs up from Councilmember Donovan, so Mr. Ellenboss, you're seconded, if that's fine with you?
Yeah, absolutely fine with me.
Okay, Tyler Byrd is next.
Is there a timeframe that this has to be done by, or do we need to do it today, one and two? If there is kind of a timeframe that, and I assume the timeframe would be driven by when those permits need to be renewed by the restaurant or the bar, if that is the case, since we're the ones, I assume, that are enforcing those, we could basically take the time we need to get this right and do the code right, and then just not enforce it during that time, essentially as well. Would that be correct?
Go ahead, Tom.
So we normally invoice renewals on a monthly basis. The way our permits are set up, we have food establishment permits expiring every month of the year. The revenue varies from month to month. We have asked our business office to hold off on invoicing our April batch billing, understanding that the council may take action and that it may affect terms of payment and permit duration and that sort of thing, so I just wanted to offer that for your information.
Okay, so Tom, we could basically not invoice at this point in time, knowing that the direction we're heading is to suspend these fees, and then go through the process of having this docketed and brought back with a more formal plan that includes rewriting the code temporarily. uh, plan that includes rewriting the code temporarily and, and passing a, an ordinance, would that be accurate?
Uh, from a legal standpoint, I won't try to comment on that. From an operational standpoint, we could definitely, uh, at the desire of the council, uh, with Erica's consent, we could, uh, hold off on billing until decisions are made.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Brown, were, were you suggesting that, when you, you said kind of across to everything, are you suggesting across to all businesses in Waukam County, or are you suggesting that it's something the state does across the entire state?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So, uh, I mean, for example, if there's a building permit that's gonna expire in the next ninety days, I'd automatically extend it for ninety days. If there's the Septic System Permit, I'd automatically extend it for ninety days.
Okay, um, I'm not, uh, sure if that's the same ordinance or a separate one, but I completely support that, and, uh, and would like to see both of those happen.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Yeah, uh, let's vote on, let's vote on this one, because it seems specific to the Health Department, because we've been talking Health Board. And then I too would love to see Councilmember Brown bring forward another motion in regards to what he was talking about.
Okay, any more comments on the motion that we have? Kathy Kirchner.
Um, I would just ask that, uh, all of the costs or, or funding that we, revenue that we don't collect by taking an action like this be considered for submittal to FEMA, because this is as a result of the crisis that we're currently experiencing. And, um, this is exactly the kind of stuff that I would like to see, you know, us looking at countywide. What, what, what is the plan about this? So, this would be one thing I think we should submit to FEMA, these lost, this lost revenue due to the fact that our restaurants are closed, and therefore we are not going to be, um, uh, forcing them to pay for licensing fees when they're not even open.
Mr. Ellenboss.
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. Is there a way if we, um, forgave the fees for this timeframe, that it could be reimbursed? Because, um, quite frankly, uh, you know, if you read all the documentation, or if you read all the projections, we're hearing somewhere in the lines of twenty to thirty percent of restaurants may not reopen after this, and if there's anything we could do to, to keep some of these folks open, I would, I would love to do it. Um, and, and I think it, you know, it follows, just like Kathy said, if, uh, if those are, if, if we lose the revenue from that, can we recoup it through, through the FEMA process?
Brad Bennett, do you have, uh, any information that you could give us on that?
Um, r- right now, all that's been authorized under FEMA is category B expenditures, I believe. And, and category B expenditures are specifically life safety, uh, actions taking, taken, um, during the period of emergency. So we're pretty much limited to, right now, to just actions we're taking to protect health and safety.
Any other discussion on the motion? Yes, Councilmember Kirchner.
Oh, well, I would argue that closing the restaurants was a, um, action that was taken to protect the life and safety of residents. So, I don't know how, uh, far we push the line on some of those things, but certainly the action to close restaurants was as a result of this crisis, and it is protecting the life and safety of everybody by not congregating in food establishments. That's how I would think about it.
Councilmember Bird.
Uh, I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Kirchner's kind of assessment on that. Um, and I think, I, I'm not sure, but worst-case scenario, we submit the application with that rationale, um, and they deny it. Uh, best-case scenario, they don't, unless there's something I'm aware of that happens if we submit one that is denied, that they don't feel is appropriate. But i- it seems like it would just be denied if it, if it was not. So, very much supportive of, of submitting that and seeing if we can get that reimbursed. Um, and I'd also like, instead of, I know that Councilmember Brown is incredibly busy running and handling donations, and kind of rounding those up and contributions and, and food, uh, processing and delivery and a number of other events as it relates to this. And so instead of asking him to bring the ordinance back, uh, maybe we can ask staff to put that together and bring it back next time. And, uh, also, I'd like to see it for, uh, BNO tax, business permits or licenses, I mean, across the board for, for everyone that's been impacted at this point.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I, my, um, my request actually be of, um, uh, the county's legal counsel to go through the county code and to identify which ones, uh, would have to be changed. But, and thank you, Mr. Bird, for your kind comments.
Any other discussion on the motion? Yes, Tom.
Just a quick point of clarification, um, uh, as I understand, the motion, uh, would be to have the Health Department work on, uh, something a little more formal with a little bit more information in terms of, uh, code sections and, and that sort of thing. Is the council interested in the three-month option, the six-month option for extension? Uh, is that an appropriate question to ask, or would you like us to present both?
Mr. Brown?
Uh, well, my preference at this point is six, uh, sorry, for three months, um, because we can always extend it if necessary. Uh, as far as working on the county code, I, I wouldn't ask the Health Department to do that, but, but something the legal counsel can do.
Other discussion? Is the motion clear? Yes, Mr. Ellenboss.
Uh, I would, I would err on the safe side and shoot for six, probably.
Sorry, I missed that last, say that again, please.
Oh, as far as the timeframe, the three months versus six months, I would err on the safe side and shoot for six. Um, we're assuming that these businesses are just gonna pop right out of any holes they're dug into, um, when we come out of this thing, so I think six would probably be more than, um, appropriate.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we may have, th- those businesses certainly are gonna have difficulty re-establishing, but we can do, we can do three months now, we can extend it for another three months if the evidence in, say, two months suggests that's necessary. I don't, I don't want to, I don't, with any of this stuff, I don't want to create long timelines and then find that something, for example, federal funding comes in, it mitigates something. So, I, I'd rather do this in three-month increments, whether it's this, frankly, or property tax, or anything else we're gonna do.
Other discussion on the motion? Kathy Hawke, do you have a clear, uh, motion that you can read back to us?
Yeah, I have that, um, the Health Department and an executive would, um, come back with a recommendation, um, and legal would work on code as to option three from, from the memo, is that correct?
Okay, everybody clear? Please call the roll.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Rudd Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, uh, Mr. Brown, yeah, go ahead.
So, I, I wanted to do two things. One is I wanted to follow up motion to this related to providing guidance to our county council's legal counsel. And the second thing is I'd like, uh, in the interest of time, I, I'd like to make a motion that we meet again tomorrow. We don't, uh, we don't have to, but I'd like to make the motion so that it can be, um, we can make the twenty-four-hour rule, uh, for the, uh, county staff. Now, I'll come, I'll come back to the first motion. So I'd like to make a motion that we ask county council's legal counsel to examine the county code and identify areas where there are permits that could expire or fees or penalties that could, or penalties that could be due from the period, from the date of the, uh, declaration of emergency through to the end of June thirtieth, with a view of suspending those penalties or, uh, extending those permits, uh, should they expire during that period. That's my motion.
I second that, uh, friendly amendment. Can we, uh, make it so at least building permits and any licensing will automatically push out for that, that same three-month period of time? Uh, I don't want someone building a house or a commercial project to be losing three months i- in the middle of a project either, or it sounded like it would only apply if it was gonna be expiring during this three months, so.
Well, the, the existing code does allow for extensions anyway. So, this is just, this is just to cover people who, who, something may expire in the middle of this period of time. But if you had a building, my understanding is if you had a building permit that expired, let's say in September, you could, you, you basically can get an automatic extension, provided you're actually, you've done some work in the period of time since it was issued.
Uh, Councilmember Brown, I think your, your motion isn't quite clear enough for staff to get, uh, their arms around. Could you please really, really tighten that up a little bit and restate it?
The, the motion is we request the county council's legal counsel to review the county code, identify sections where there could be permits that expire or penalties incurred from the period of time starting from the date of the emergency ordinance till June thirtieth, and that those permits are automatically extended or those penalties are waived for that, for, during that period.
Uh, staff, Kathy and Dana, do you have that clear enough for your records? And I'll get to you in a second, Todd.
I do. Dana does.
Okay, go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, I was a little confused, the original motion, um, Mr. Brown was saying something about having them do that in twenty-four hours, so I, I didn't, couldn't follow that, but we have begun some of this discussion with the planning director in terms of some of those recommendations that the DAW did. So I was trying to get a sense of the timeframe that Mr. Brown was talking about. Was this something you wanted us acting on tomorrow, or is, and, or is it just, because it's gonna take a while department by department, I would think, to get through this?
So, sorry, the twenty-four hours relates to a separate motion unrelated to this one?
Okay.
Discussion on Mr. Brown's motion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Rod Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, you had another motion?
Yeah, I think, in the interest of the fact that we may have additional business we have to do tomorrow, I'd like to make a motion that we hold a council meeting tomorrow at two PM, which gives us twenty-four hours for the notice period, and if the, if the county staff think we need to make it a little bit later, please let us know. I'd like to put that and notice it, if we don't need it, we can cancel it, but I'd like to at least leave it as something we have the option to do.
Dana?
I, well, what's, what is the meeting for?
It's, it's a regular council, a special council meeting to discuss whatever we need to discuss tomorrow, should we need to at the end of this day.
Can we wait and see when this meeting is over before we choose a time?
Uh, you could, but my, do you, don't you have a twenty-four-hour rule?
I do, so if this meeting is over at three-thirty, we'd have to have the meeting tomorrow at quarter to four.
Okay, all right, fine. But I, I, I'm happy, I was trying to, I was trying to cover your twenty-four-hour rule, that's all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
I would love to see it on Thursday in our one o'clock timeframe. Some of us have to keep America rolling. And, counsel?
I, I would too, I have, I have some obligations tomorrow and other meetings, uh, so if Thursday could work. Mr. Brown?
Well, I'll withdraw my motion, because if we're talking about Thursday, we can make the decision at the end of this meeting.
Okay. So, that, uh, motion is withdrawn, so I'll go back to Erica, so, so we can do the rest of her report.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I have a few things to go over. Um, the first is just an update on, um, this operational period objectives. And, uh, the latest operational period for, um, Unified Command started today. So the objectives for, for this, um, four-day period are to, um, establish isolation facilities to meet countywide demand. And I know all of you saw that press release, um, that the Unified Command sent out, um, that I forwarded to you last night. Um, so they are working on that. Provide essential medical screening and care. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I have last week's, I have both in my hand, um, and I'm just now realizing that I was reading you last week instead of this week's. There we go. Apologies, um. So this week's are establish isolation facilities to meet countywide demand, provide essential medical screening and care. Um, county health officer to provide data-driven, um, decisions on public health strategies, provide resources and supplies to healthcare facilities and first responders as requested, and I have an update for you on that. Uh, identify critical functions and services, so that's, um, utilities and continually essential government services and public transportation, maintain childcare for essential person, personnel, monitor health of essential personnel, minimize staffing in EOC, establish surge capacity capability, assess agriculture, aquaculture, fishery and farming impacts, uh, monitor and assess impacts of border restrictions, and monitor and assess impacts on local government, ensuring compliance with state and FEMA guidance. So a few updates related to the operational period. Um, the first is, I guess I'll work backwards. The first is, um, you may have seen that, um, the state has now, um, uh, extended the ban on hunting and fishing until May four, much to my husband's, um, unhappiness and probably others, uh, but, uh, but that is also, that's been extended through May four, um, due to the fact that that's kind of inconsistent messaging with the idea of staying home. So, um, the, uh, the second is, um, I mentioned that the Health Department is developing a strategic plan, um, as it relates to this, to this outbreak and the response, and, um, and that's actually out for review at the moment. And I, I'd really like the opportunity to share it with you, so you have a sense of what the Health Department is doing versus what Unified Command is doing and where the decision points are. Uh, I think it's important to note that, um, at this point, I can, I can tell you sort of, it can be confusing about what, what is the Health Department's role, what is the Health Department doing versus what is Unified Command doing? The Health Department, uh, is, is doing that rapid testing response. So when there's an outbreak at a long-term care facility, a skilled nursing facility or an assisted care facility, we have a team of nurses that go out and, um, and do a thorough analysis and do testing. Um, so that is a function that the Health Department is doing, that is not Unified Command. Other functions that the Health Department specifically are doing are that drive-through testing for, um, first responders and healthcare professionals, for people with underlying health conditions, for people who have been exposed, um, to, to someone who's a positive case based on our case investigations. So we are doing that, and that's unique to the Health Department, not, not part of Unified Command. Uh, we are operating the call center, um, seven days a week and, um, and providing information um, about COVID to the public that is interested or concerned. Um, we are doing case investigations, so when we, um, and, and these, of course, as the numbers have gone up, this is a much bigger body of work, which is why we've diverted environmental health staff. So when, when we get a positive case, we're able to interview them and talk to them about where they've been. where they've been, who they've been around, and, and then be able to contact those individuals so they know that either they should be watching for, for symptoms of the disease or, or if they do have symptoms that they should be tested. And we are communicating daily with all of the long-term care facilities and skilled nursing facilities, despite the number of cases they have or whether or not they have an outbreak. We ask questions like, do you have policies and procedures in place in case of an outbreak? How much PPE do you have? How much do you need? How much do you go through in 48 hours? Because 48 hours is essentially the turnaround time between when, when a request comes in and when Unified Command can get them more material. So really trying to partner with these facilities in a proactive way and working with them to make sure that they have the tools and resources and technical assistance to, to ensure that if there is an outbreak, they can address it quickly and at all, at all costs to try to prevent an outbreak in their facility. Because as you've all seen, this is a particularly vulnerable population. The, the fatality rate among people in these facilities is much, much higher than the general population. So there's a lot of effort going into working with these facilities. The, the other two things that I think are really unique to the Health Department are providing that, that guidance and recommendation. So I know you saw that Tom had a mask on and this doubles as a mask when I'm out in the world, but, but the, the masking guidance over the weekend and continued guidance on who should test and, and who, who are priority individuals for that. And then also communicating with our healthcare providers. Our deputy health officer has formed a healthcare coalition and that's an opportunity for all the healthcare providers, from dentists to, to acupuncturists, to peace health and primary care and everything in between, to be talking and working together, sharing resources, talking about sort of how things are going in their facilities or if they've closed their facilities, what resources they have to bear. So that is a, that's a Health Department function that informs Unified Command as all of these functions do. But outside of those functions, our Health Department is involved in Unified Command, but, but is not, but is not necessarily driving the actions resulting from Unified Command. So I just want to make that clarification because I think it's confusing. And until I wrote this down myself, I needed to think it through as well. So, so that's kind of, that's kind of where the Health Department is playing a significant role and will continue to play a role. So, so moving on, just a couple of other updates related to the operational objective.
I think there's a question on one of those points.
Okay.
So go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Yeah.
Hey, Erica. In relation to that, what I'm curious about is, my understanding is that Unified Command would like to begin establishing additional isolation and quarantine sites or field hospitals in the county, in Linden and Blaine and some of the other jurisdictions. And that in order for us to do that, we need to be pre-approved with the FEMA application and that can't happen until the Health Department and the Health Officer signs the document as well. And so we're waiting for you all to do that so we can begin establishing and, and setting up and planning for those sites and making sure that they happen versus waiting till they, like it's doomsday and we have to have them and, and now we're starting the process. Can you speak to that?
Sure. My understanding, the last time I talked to Greg about this, my understanding is he just needed some more information about these, the nature of the facilities, the intended use, you know, just a bit more detail than, than, hey Greg, we've got 21 facilities, can you sign an order? And that, that is just, you know, an ongoing conversation that they're having. So from my understanding, that was, that was what he needed out of the process in order to, to move forward.
Okay. So follow up to that. Do you know, has he kind of written down what he needed for that, for additional information? And has that been provided to him? And do we have an ETA for when he'll sign off on those documents?
I don't have that, but I'm happy to have a subsequent conversation with him about this. I'll write myself an note.
Mr. Brown?
So, um, to miss, to follow on from Mr. Bird's line of conversation. So we can't get the FEMA funding until the Health Department has signed off on the, on the need, if I understand correctly. But my understanding is we can't, if, if the need has been signed off and we make a submission to FEMA, the money initially has to come from the county government, as I understand it, and FEMA reimburses us. So we also have to, as a council, have approved the budget item in order to fund those facilities in Blaine or, or Linden or Southern Valley or wherever they're going to be. Is that, is that a correct statement?
I would have to defer to the executive on that.
Yes.
Go ahead, executive.
I, I say, I just wanted to say that there are a couple of thoughts on this, that if we establish facilities in Bellingham versus out in the county, I mean, you know, is that most of the resources and medical personnel are available in Bellingham? If we have 20, 30 patients in the place, then we have to move the resources there? Or what would be better? That is just a consideration. It's not from me personally. It is for the logistic peoples to, to do that. We, we prefer that if we can do it in two or three places in the county, and that's what logistics people are looking at it. So, so that's much my input is.
Deputy Executive Tyler Schroeder, but to your question, Councilmember Brown, that's correct. The county would need the cash flow of those purposes for other isolation and quarantine facilities throughout the county if it's deemed appropriate. And that Unified Command is currently looking at locations, but does need the ability from the council to move forward with some funding associated with it.
Right. So, Mr. Brown?
So just for clarity, the, the Health Department determines a need, the executive comes to the council and says, I need the budget. The council approves the budget, the money is spent, and then FEMA reimburses, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions on that topic for Erica? Mr. Brown?
Sorry, and I just wanted to add that if the council holds up the approval of the money, FEMA can't step in and fund it for us, therefore the thing doesn't get done.
That would be my understanding.
Okay, Erica, go ahead.
Oh, I think Councilmember Krishner is raising her hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't see over there. Oh, you did? Go ahead.
That's okay, I could let Erica respond to that and then ask my question. You had a response, Erica.
I, I don't know. I, I think it was.
So, um, that, are there some projects that the Health Department has deemed necessary that have gone to the logistics section at Unified Command that they're waiting for funding for at this time? Are there projects?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure. We, I'd have to check in with the staff that are working with Unified Command in that particular area.
So nobody's waiting for the council to approve funding? They've got a project, they're waiting for us to approve funding on it? As far as, as far as I know, I'll just speak for myself, I don't know that there are any. And then is there a kind of an overarching message from the Health Director or Health Department on where we are in this crisis? Are we on the up curve, down curve, middle curve? Do we know where we are? Do we know we're going to need 33 additional facilities in the county? Or are we going to make it out without needing those? Like, that would be information that'd be helpful to me to know.
Sure. So we are, according to the CDC's pandemic flu framework, which we are using as a basis for determining the, the sort of phase of where we are in this, we are still in the acceleration phase of, of this disease. We are not in the deceleration phase. Where we are along that, along that upslope in the bell curve is still hard to know. There is good, there was just, there was just an article that statewide, the, the stay home, stay healthy order has had impacts. And, and you know, whether or not people continue, I, I feel like a broken record, but whether or not people continue to stay home and protect themselves and their family really, really will change the trajectory of this. But we are not, we are not at the point where we're out of the woods, I can tell you that. And, and what kind of facilities and how many we'll need is still in question. But, but we do need to prepare for the possibility that there could be a surge and the hospital will reach capacity and will need, will need other resources, including like the, the Motel 6, which is, which is, like I told you, the sort of the lowest acuity. So very little support services, all the way to an ICU setting to offset the, the patient need in the hospital. So, so I think what Unified Command is doing, and Tyler is there quite a bit, so correct me if I'm wrong, but what Unified Command is doing is really setting the stage for preparation so, so we aren't in a situation that the hospital's at capacity and there's nowhere for people to go who are in critical, in a critical dire situation.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, in the situation that Councilmember Brown just pointed out, there would be a, a plan specifically communicated for what the expenditures would, would be for. And I think as a council, we've demonstrated that when that's there, those things get supported pretty much seven, nothing. So, and I, and we've also proven our ability to be nimble with the meetings that we've had in the past. So I like the idea of, of having a plan and then funding it.
I have one more update, if that was, oh, I'm sorry.
Erica, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I have one more update. I have good news. A conversation we've had a lot in the past couple of months, the issue of PPE. We, I was on a call with Secretary Wiesman over the weekend with all the local health jurisdiction directors and health officers. And they, they are going full force. They, because the state has larger purchasing power essentially than local jurisdictions, they are buying PPE on behalf of all the local health jurisdictions. And the, the amount that they're able to buy is, is almost staggering at this point. They have contracts with a lot of national providers for the next 12 weeks. And, and you know, this, this is not, this has not come out in terms of like exact numbers, but they're spending tens of million dollars a week on PPE for statewide operations. And they have a great pipeline to allow local jurisdictions to request supplies and get those in. So we're, again, we're not out of the woods on that, but, but the, the trajectory of PPE availability is going to change significantly in the coming weeks. And that's really good news for, for testing capacity, for healthcare surge capacity and, and all the rest. So that, that's exciting news and I think a, a needed change in really tackling this. So that's, that's the updates I have for you today. I, I'm happy to come back whenever you have your next meeting, but I know that we, you wanted to talk about that too.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Zoltenbeck was asked a question about where we were financially and I, I, I think it's a little, it's a little bit of an unfair question because she's not responsible for finance. I would just like to ask maybe Mr. Schroeder or Mr. Bennett to comment as to where we are with the degree of commitments that we have made and we need to make that are already being dealt, identified relative to the amount of money that we've already allocated.
Anyone from finance or?
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. I think from the executive's office standpoint, we've laid out the expenditures to date in the last couple council meetings, as the executive's office was proposing to move forward with an emergency ordinance. So I don't think we need to get into too much of those details today. I can confirm that Unified Command is looking at the surge capacity throughout the county for countywide demand, for additional facilities that would provide a medical capacity as well as isolation and quarantine, that would cost likely the similar amount, if not more, than the Motel 6 quarantine facility and operations. So it's very hard to make commitments at Unified Command without having budget authorized for those commitments to be accomplished. So that's why there's an introduction item for the $4 million to allow for those decisions to be made in coordination with Unified Command. But those discussions are currently happening as of today and have been for the last week or so.
Brad, did you have anything to add?
No, no. If, if, the only thing I would have said would be, would have been the Motel 6 estimate, but if you guys have that, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bird was first and then Mr. Brown and then Mr. Ellenboss.
Erica, I asked this last week when we had met, but I don't know if I caught you or if your speakers might have been off. So my question was Unified Command has a system in place and they, every sign says it, beginning of every meeting says it, it's document, 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 document. And the idea is that when we come back, we're at the end of this, we need to be able to look back and see what happened and what works and what isn't working. The Health Department is an enormous portion of this whole response. And I want to make sure that you're documenting in the same fashion that Unified Command is because if we lack your information and your documentation, I don't, I don't know how we can actually put that puzzle together. It's like missing half the puzzle pieces, right? And so it, as a council and a health board, we're recording every single one of these video calls. I know the policy groups are recording their calls, Unified Command's recording all of their calls, the small cities are recording their calls, the borders are recording their calls. I know you have a call every morning at eight AM, if I recall correctly. And then, so are those calls being recorded and documented? One and two, when I look at the IAP software, we have access, everyone's tracking notes and they're doing a really great job of that over at Unified Command, but I'm not seeing, you know, short of John Walper's tracking his information, I'm not actually seeing any notes from others that are working as health, within that health role within the system being tracked or any documentation there. I do see some health employees that are doing things like logistics or, or, you know, maybe the Joint Information Center that are tracking, but where are you tracking your information and how is that working?
So you did ask this in, in an email and I appreciate the question. I can provide you with a fuller answer to that in writing, but all, all significant decisions, all, all moves to change operations or create policies and procedures, those are all being documented. Believe me, we all want to learn from this. We want to learn what we did well and we want to learn what we can improve because if, if we have another pandemic, we should be, we all around the world hope to be better than we are in this. And so, you know, I, I talk regularly with staff about, gosh, I can't wait for the debrief and really talk about what we did well, how to improve, what are ways? And, and of course, documentation is critical to that. Are, all of our staff that are working in those, those areas that I described are documenting the interactions and conversations that they're having with the facilities, they're documenting the case investigations. Obviously, some of this is HIPAA, so you know, we have to be careful about what information that is, but there are good systems in place that are separate from Unified Command in order for us to do. But, um, there are good systems in place, um, that are separate from Unified Command in order for us to do our operations. There are good systems in place to track the decision-making process and, um, and how different decisions are being implemented.
So are you, does that include then recording all, all of those update calls?
We, so if you are referring to the Monday or the, the meetings at eight AM, we, we don't have those meetings anymore. Once we transition to Unified Command, I send, uh, an email to staff every morning rather than, um, having, uh, all staff, um, update at eight AM every day. So obviously, that's in the public record and it's really just an overview of what's happening at Unified Command since that's kind of where the action is at this point. We, uh, in terms of recording other meetings, we, we may cover a variety of topics. It's much more, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in meetings 75 of my 85 hours a week with staff. So, um, it's hard to say in apples to apples, like where there's significant decisions where it's important to have discussions and documentation, we do have records of those. We, we have note takers, but in terms of more casual conversations and meetings, we, we don't generally record those. And we wouldn't in, we wouldn't in the course of our business anyway.
Yeah, yeah. And I understand maybe like you and I run into each other in the hallway and I, I wouldn't expect us to whip out a microphone and start recording. The, uh, but anything where you have a, you know, a handful of people in the room that are discussing this issue, I, I think is, is important. And I think that we see that across the board with all, with all other groups. The hard part is i- in the moment, you don't know what will be, um, important information or critical information. And, and so they could be discussed that wasn't anticipated to be discussed. And, and by that point in time, uh, you, you're not pausing the meeting and saying, hold on, don't say that, let's, let's go back and record. So I think it's, it's really imperative that everything is documented across the board for every, you know, for that use at the end of the day. And so, um, how do we make sure that that, that gets implemented as a policy and that it begins taking place? Because, and maybe Bill knows this, but I thought that when we spooled up Unified Command, there was actually a directive or, or something to that extent put in place. It said that all of this information should be recorded and documented, but but I could be wrong. I, I can go find that, but so.
Well, I, I can tell you this, that where, where there's decisions, where there's either policy or operational decisions, we are keeping records of those. We, we are all, um, really committed to making sure that we learn from this and we learn as we go. So I, I feel very comfortable with the level of documentation that we have. And I, I guess I can just tell you that.
I just said, yeah, I just said, Councilmember Byrd, that the, uh, the Unified Command meetings that occur, uh, every morning at 10 o'clock are also through go-to meeting and the content is recorded. And for most of the meetings, uh, when she's available, we have a historian there that's taking, uh, written notes. Then she transcribes them as well.
Yeah, you, you guys are doing an amazing job from what I've seen on that side. Thanks. Um, thank you, Bill.
Mr. Brown, you were next.
Yeah, I just want to come back to this issue about, uh, finances. You know, we've, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schroder. My understanding is that we've, we've approved 1.75 million. We've already committed for the Motel Six project alone is 1.3. So I'm, I'm just concerned that we haven't allocated enough money for, uh, if there isn't, you know, if the surge comes along. And let's face it, if this, if the surge comes along, it could be off by a couple of days either direction. So this thing could happen really quickly. You know, I, I'm just concerned we haven't allocated sufficient funding for, uh, I, I think we've pretty much exhausted the existing funding that we've approved. And I don't see us having any additional capacity in place at the moment. So maybe someone can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we've spent or committed everything, um, we've already approved.
Tyler Schroder, or Executive, do you have a?
Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive. Uh, the administration agrees with that perspective. That's why we have been asking for emergency dollars.
Right. Thank you. So to, to come back is, um, you know, if, if we want to do something in Birch Bay, if we want to do something in Linden, if we want to do something in, um, uh, Southern Valley, and it, and it may be just an isolation facility to allow, you know, uh, to, a couple to split and have be isolated. Not because one of them needs constant medical attention, but just because they need to be somewhere else. We don't have the funds allocated for it, so, um, that's my point.
Councilmember Ellenbach?
So do we have the Motel Six stuff in front of us? Because I didn't see it. And as far as, um, Deputy Executive Schroder is saying that's why he's bringing forward emergency money. We don't have any emergency money in front of us right now. We have an introductory item. If that needs to be emergency, maybe it should have been brought forward that way. And all I really see, all I really see is a, is a chastising email from the Executive and the Sheriff claiming partisan.
Check your email. There is another emergency ordinance that, uh, it's, I think that was mailed out by the, emailed out by the administration.
What time, when did that come?
It was prior, just prior to the start of this meeting. I, I just saw it. I just happened to see it come in.
Okay.
And I can speak to that for a second. Yeah, that, that, that is just in consideration if the council decides to move that action forward. The administration has tried twice last, last week and will not be proposing that unless the, unless the council decides to come forward with that action.
Okay, got it. Any other questions for Erica? Yes, Tyler Byrd, and then Ben Ellenbach?
Yeah, Erica, the quarantine, I got these backwards for a little while. I, I think isolation is me by myself in a room, but really that's what we're referring to is quarantine. And then isolation is going to be, I'm a positive and I, or confirmed tested positive. And now I'm, I'm with everyone getting medical attention or, or hanging out till I'm, I'm healthy. Is that correct?
Uh, isolation is, isolation is if you're, if you're positive, um, and you would be, you would be in your own space. They're both in your own space. Isolations, if you're positive, quarantine is if you've been exposed, but aren't, but aren't showing symptoms.
Okay, so for this specifically for Motel Six, what we're hoping is that this is going to be used for, or dedicated to the homeless population and those individuals who have, are confirmed sick then and have symptoms? Like they've tested positive at this point?
So, uh, this would be, this would be a situation and, um, and honestly, it could be, as far as my understanding goes, and again, like this is a Wacom Unified, so, um, so I just want to be clear. This isn't a Health Department thing. But, um, from what my understanding is, this is a place for people who, um, who can't self-isolate. And so that would be, uh, let's say you have a family of four in a one-bedroom apartment and dad, dad has a, is positive. And, um, and the rest of the family can't, he can't self-isolate because, because there isn't the space to do that. Dad could go to the Motel Six. Likewise, if you have an individual who, um, who's maybe in an assisted living facility that doesn't need, um, intensive med, medical care, but can't self-isolate because of the communal nature of their living arrangement, they could go there as well. So, um, so I think it's an important distinction because it's, because it is for people who can't self-isolate, but that's not just people who are homeless. So there's kind of a wide range of people that could go there.
That makes sense. So what I'm trying to figure out in my head is then, these people aren't necessarily people that are requiring medical attention. They're just, they need to be isolated.
Right.
So why are we doing this? Why, I'm trying to figure out why we're doing this when we're telling the general community that you don't need to be tested. Everyone should be assumed that they're sick and we don't need to be documenting like who is sick or following up and making sure that they, they are self-isolating or that they are quarantining themselves. If that's the case and, and we're just saying, hey, people are running around, people are sick, why do we feel the need to then basically pay 1.3 million dollars to rent a hotel so that people can go isolate there? And, and then actually compound that with the need to have 24/7 security onsite and have it fenced in and gated and, and camera controls and everything else?
So I, I can't speak to the specific operations of the facility. That's really a question for Unified Command. But what I can tell you is, um, there has obviously been, um, there's obviously been a shift, right? So when, when this first came out, the language was self-isolate, self-isolate, self-isolate. We don't have enough tests, we don't have enough testing capacity to test everyone that has, that's showing symptoms, right? And, um, and that, that has shifted a bit because there's, there is more capacity to test people who have, who have symptoms. And, and really, I think the idea and, and, you know, if the executive wants to speak up about this because it is more of a Unified Command, the idea is really that, um, that we don't want to expose people unnecessarily when we have, when we have confirmed cases. And so when we have confirmed cases, for example, if, if you think about Bellingham High School, the, the impact of a positive case there could be disastrous for that community because they can't self-isolate. Likewise, a, a positive case of a normally healthy person who maybe doesn't have underlying health concerns at an assisted living could be also disastrous for that community. So, so this is really an opportunity to, um, once again, kind of stop it, stop it at the earliest point possible and make sure that these folks are getting healthy and, um, going back to the community without exposing others knowingly. Because we know with positive cases that they, they could be exposing others.
Okay, I, I can understand that and that makes sense to me. If this is going to be open to everyone and that's the case, then what is the need for 200, well, say $300,000, it's 295,000 for, in contracts to Lighthouse Mission and to, uh, for case management?
So, uh, that is part of, uh, kind of the unique circumstances of the population that may be going there, right? Is, is case management for people who have, uh, behavioral or substance abuse or other, other underlying concerns? We want people to be stabilized there and to stay there. And so case management could be a useful tool. And frankly, um, if I had to stay in the Motel Six for two weeks by myself and not be able to talk to anyone and see anyone, I, I might need a case manager and, and mental health support as well. So, so I think it's, um, it's really just identifying, um, the potential needs of the community and how to address them so we can ensure compliance with people staying onsite.
Councilmember Ellenbach, and then Councilmember Brown.
Going back to the Executive's Office, so, uh, let me get this straight, Tyler. We, we get this email telling us 14 days is too long and, and that we, we need to ramp it up and we need to drop the partisan play and blah, blah, blah. So, and then, but then we get a, then we, we have a meeting today with no emergency funding in it, just an introductory item. So was the, was the memo a, a grandstand or what, what was that? Is, uh, do you, do you, do we need to have emergency funding? Because if we need to have it, let's have the conversation. If you have a plan for it to be spent, if you, if you know where it needs to go, let's have the conversation. Let's not, you know, let's do what needs to be done. But don't send me a memo that tells me we need the funding in 14 days isn't going to cut it and then not introduce something and say, no, we're not, we're not going to bring forth an emergency, um, budget amendment or, or anything to that nature. We're just, if, if it's an emergency, it's an emergency and let's talk about it. If it isn't, then it isn't. Where is it? What do we want to do?
Yeah, so Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive. It was an emergency last Tuesday when we came to the council. It was an emergency last Thursday when we came to the council and it's an emergency again in this situation. We brought many rocks to the council and every time we come to the council, the council has asked us to bring more rocks. We have no more rocks behind us. We are asking for support through Unified Command. And the Executive and the Sheriff did pin you a letter to the council articulating the importance to allow for a budget item in which would be used for cash flow for nimble decision-making to be accomplished by professionals in this community that are running your emergency response. The administration decided not to bring forward another emergency ordinance and allow the council to do that if the council chooses to do that today. Administration did move forward an ordinance for introduction so that the normal 14-day time period can go through. And the majority, because I do believe there's a majority support on this council to move forward with an emergency ordinance, can make that decision at the next council meeting. If council wants to take an action and bring in an emergency ordinance forward, the administration prepared one for your consideration. And, uh, that, and I'll leave it at that point.
Go ahead with the follow-up, Councilmember Ellenbach.
So I saw, and I saw a, a budget, um, a $3 million ask. But again, there's not a lot of support for where that money's going to go. Is that money earmarked for the Motel Six situation? Or what, what is, what is it, what is it that that money's going to be spent on?
That money would be spent on additional PPEs, like the PPEs that we've been purchasing the last couple of weeks. That money would be established for the identification of other isolation and quarantine facilities throughout our county, whether that be in Blaine, in Linden, in East County or other areas that Unified Command decides to move forward. And that money would be able to show support to Unified Command to continue with their medical surge preparations in which they had conversations today about to make decisions to protect the life and safety of the community in Wacom County. That's what that money would be allocated for. Let me point out one more thing, that money is for cash flow purposes. It's our understanding that FEMA will be providing 100% of the reimbursement back, 75% from the federal government and 25% from the state government. All of the actions that Unified Command will be taking, it was their request for the council to provide a cash flow loan that would be reimbursed into the future. That's all we're asking the council to do. And to respect and to give authorization for Unified Command to continue out their actions that they're proposing.
And so I would like to interject just one thing at this time. At 12:56 is when you receive, uh, a, uh, two companion ordinances, emergency ordinances for $3 million. That's what Tyler's referring to when he says the council can bring those forward. Those, you should have those ordinances in your inbox. One more quick follow-up, Mr. Ellenbach, and I'm going to Mr. Brown.
Okay, so to the Executive's Office, if the information that you just gave me verbally came forward written prior to the, prior to these meetings, that would go a long way. I move that we take forward these emergency ordinances right now as an emergency ordinance.
My second. Discussion, Mr. Brown, he's had his hand up, he's been patient. Unmute, please.
God, you actually like hearing my voice, Barry. I think, uh, procedurally, I think we have to do these sequentially. So I'd ask Mr. Ellenbach to amend his motion to moving forward the interfund loan ordinance first.
Sure.
Okay.
The second, uh, second agrees.
Right.
Discussion on the motion. Do you all see those ordinances before you? I don't know if that's a yes or a no, it's a kind of a nothing. I got a thumbs up, a thumbs up. Tyler Byrd?
Yeah, thank you. I'm still not supportive of it at this point in time and, and here's why. I'm aware of three different models that project the need for this. One is the University of Wacom. I'm aware of three different models that project the need for this. One is the University of Washington's model, which we've seen in the moves in in recent days and is readily available online. That model projected that we would be uh peaking out actually earlier this month, a couple of days ago on April second, as far as the entire state goes. If that is the case and that model is correct, we are now on the downside of this and the peak has already occurred. And max hospitalization uh has we've moved past that as it relates to to COVID nineteen. Um if it's not, and we are looking at one of the other two models that we've developed in-house. Uh we have a model that says that at sixty seven percent reduction, uh we'd be forecasting a peak in May and that peak would be ninety four hospital beds required. And those ninety four hospital beds would be sufficiently met by the two hundred and fifty hospital beds that are currently in place yeah through the hospital. And so there would be no additional need for facilities. Uh if we're not using that model, but we're using the second model to that that we've developed in-house at a fifty percent reduction. That model says that we are not going to peak until August and that we do not break capacity is our current capacity and have additional needs until July. And so none of the models that we have today, if we're looking at the data that we have, it showcases an immediate need in the immediate future. That's one reason why. The second reason why is that the process that we're going through requires that documentation be provided to FEMA for a pre-approved application to occur. That pre-approved application lays out the plan, the facilities and the spending associated with it, as well as the justification for each of those sites. That happens in advance of us going out and approving the site. And that can happen in advance of us personally funding it as well. And that information would be fantastic to receive as a council so that we can see the sites and understand what the plans are and where we're intending to roll those out and how many beds that they're going to meet and provide to us. And what will be financially for us as far as an impact goes in the short term or long term. I don't see a need to approve money without knowing what those plans are, especially knowing that we're going to be getting or seeking pre-approval in the first place from another organization. It seems like we could do both of those at the exact same time. In addition to that, it's now been four weeks that I've been asking that the the Executive's Office bring back some sort of financial budget that shows the projections of where we're heading as it relates to revenue loss and increased expenses. And to date, I still haven't seen that documentation. And so at the end of the day, for me, a three million dollar line item with nothing behind it is is really hard to fund at the end. So I I'm a no.
Mr. Brown.
Sorry, I want to read a couple of things that I think are relevant to this. First off, I understand that uh San Diego County, and I might might have my data a little bit wrong, but I think it's more right than wrong. Put in an application for one point, two billion dollars to FEMA for funding for COVID. The application was five pages long and FEMA proactively funded half of that and sent them the money, six hundred billion, six hundred million dollars, because the five pages was adequate enough for FEMA's purposes in this crisis. The next thing I I want to bring up is that I I was a bit startled by the amount of employees required to run the facility, the Motel Six. But I was reading, so I did a bit of research and one of the articles that came out was a uh the example of the Denton State Supported Living Center, which has four hundred and forty three residents, and listen to this, fourteen hundred and sixty staff to support those residents. It's a ratio of three and a half staff per person as an example. Now, where this becomes relevant is what I what one of the reasons I'm very supportive of the Motel Six is how much money it's going to save us. And let me explain that answer. If you go back to a recent, a very recent Surgeon General's study where they super they they interviewed hospitals around the country, here's a couple of comments that are relevant. When a patient comes in and gets tested to a hospital, the hospital needs to treat the patient as potentially a positive COVID patient. So that means they are taking up a bed in the hospital for the length of time it takes the test to come back. So all a person has to be done is to be suspected of being COVID positive. And if they go to St. Joe's, they are going to be kept at St. Joe's and they are going to suck up a bed in St. Joe's that could be needed for ICU treatment until the result comes back. Now, the other thing, the other comment was in this is, and this is the word, their words, the most startling surprise for me was that nursing homes are not accepting patients until they've been tested to be free of COVID, which means that a hospital will probably have to keep that patient another seven days afterwards. They don't need to be in the hospital. So this is a person who could be in this the Motel Six facility, but instead is going to take up a hospital bed because we don't want to send them back to a nursing home. So please, this is such, this is so much cheaper to do this than alternatives.
Councilmember Donovan.
So the motion is on AB twenty twenty one seventy five, which was the emergency version of the items that are in our packet as introduction items. That's my first question. Is that correct?
It's the interfund loan ordinance. That's the first one.
But okay, and it's the it's an emergency version than of the one that's in our packet. Okay.
It's the version we received at twelve fifty six today.
Right, okay. Um the only the comment then is, um I mean, whatever the i- i- if the models that Mr. Bird's talking about uh are correct, this is a fund that then wouldn't be spending those monies. Um the point is to give Unified Command some cash flow. Um these aren't necessarily general fund dollars that are going to be spent. Um they're, I think we're pretty confident that are going to be funds that will be reimbursed by FEMA. But if the if the crisis doesn't hit with the severity that some people might be expecting it, those monies aren't spent and they go back to the EDI fund. Um I I assume that's that would be what happens, right? It's fairly simple. If 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 the models um that are more optimistic are correct, we transfer the money to our loan fund. We don't spend it. We move it back new to the loan fund. If the money is needed for some nimble action on the part of Unified Command, it'll be there.
Tyler Schroeder.
That's correct. Councilmember Donovan.
Councilmember Brown.
Questions answered.
So the ordinance that the first ordinance we are going to be looking at is um the one that reads an ordinance authorizing an interfund loan to refinance or to finance cash flow for COVID nineteen emergency response. That's the language. That's the title of the first ordinance that we will be considering. Other discussion on the motion to approve, uh Mr. Brown, then Mr. Kirschner and then Mr. Ellen Boss.
But I just want to be make sure everybody's clear. This is just putting money into the fund. This is not the ordinance that authorizes the spending.
Councilmember Kirschner.
I just want to um say that I completely agree with Tyler Bird's analysis of this. Um and I I also want to say a few more things because I haven't spoken much on this. In fact, I don't think I said a word at our last meeting. Um I I I have not felt um as disrespected as a as a council member as I did after the executive ranted at us last two days ago. Um we have not gotten information that we've asked for. I'm trying to get a little emotional about this because I'm about up there in my rope on it. Um we we spent a good uh two point three million dollars taking care of uh point zero one percent of a population in Lockham County. I've not heard any plans yet for taking care of any of the vulnerable people that aren't homeless, those people that live in nursing homes, assisted living facilities. Um I know you guys are going to vote for this in two weeks because you're going to introduce it tonight, so or today. I'm going to go ahead and support it today. But I'm supporting it just because I know you're going to vote for it and uh I'm I'm supporting it in a protest. Um put three million dollars into the fund and then probably tomorrow I'll find out that there's some other program that got approved uh to support something that really isn't, you know, supporting the rest of the county or the small cities or the rural area. And I'll just be disappointed again. Um anyway, I'm I'm just, I I'm disgusted. Um there's going to be a lot more than the lives and the livelihood that is going to be damaged through this crisis. Um there's a lot of trust going to be rebuilt.
Councilmember Ellen Boss.
Warning rant. So quite frankly, I my disgust, I share Kathy's disgust. Um the right thing to do is the right thing to do. And quite frankly, the executive is not my boss. The uh executive offices are not my boss and the people are my boss. And quite frankly, if I have to listen to another lecture from the executive op executives office about what my job is, or maybe I should just go post some fluff on social media on my computer. But respect the job we have to do. We respect the job you have to do. That letter that got sent yesterday was unnecessary, grandstanding, complete. I don't have an appropriate word to use there. The only partisan crap stuff I've seen has come out of the Executive's Office. We're here to help. We just want to see a plan. We haven't gotten what we've asked for. In the fut- if we approve the three million bucks, respect the job that we have to do. And in the future, when you come back and ask for more, make sure you've got a plan in place, a good plan in place. I'm speaking in favor of the motion.
Okay, any other uh? Comments, questions, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, the the thank you. Um you know, I I I feel the exact same way at this point. I think you all know that that I've been asking for information for a long time now. I've been asking for certain actions for a long time now. And I continue to say that I haven't received them and that the council hasn't received them. Uh last meeting that we had here when this came forward, the agenda packet and the letter from the the Executive's Office said that there was going to be a budget included from the Health Department and a breakdown of the spending. What we got instead was a verbal, high level, here's some buckets of numbers and how they might scale. When I asked that to be sent in detail to the council for us to review, it was never provided to us. When I asked about having the models sent to us, those models were never provided to us. The way that I had to go and finally get that information was to log into the IAP software that I have access to through as being the the policy advisor, yeah, um and to be able to download that information that I was luckily able to find in there to be able to understand that. And now what's happened is that, you know, I downloaded that information yesterday or the day before and now my account's been locked out so that I no longer can even access it that way. You tell us that we have access and that you're bringing stuff and in reality, what you're doing is you're further restricting it. You're further removing transparency and you're further removing the amount of information that we have as elected officials and that our community has. I got to tell you, I I don't believe the people elected me to make decisions on what they should know and what they should not know. I don't believe that we as elected hired staff members to decide what we should know as elected and what we shouldn't know as the people being elected. I don't think that is their right and I don't think that is in their power or their justification or jurisdiction or anything at this point in time. And it really ticks me off that somehow some departments and some people feel that they do have that ability to not give the information to us who are elected to make decisions. This is our job. It is what the people expect from us. You know this. You've known it forever. You know it on everything you bring forward to us. So why is the expectation now that you should be bringing blank checks forward and that teamwork and partnership and commitment to overcoming this really means just giving you everything you want while you pretend to give us something which is really nothing? I don't understand that. If you're telling me it's because you're worried about the information that you're sharing and you'd like to do it in an executive session or a one-on-one, I'll make that happen on my side. At least the one-on-one, we'll talk to Karen about an executive session. But to sit here and say that we're giving you information and then to chastise us and ridicule us and to play political games around that, it it's frustrating and I don't see the point. I I don't know why we continue to have this conversation, why it has to keep coming back up. You've heard from all of us, we have no problem funding it. We just want transparency. We want the information and we want to work together on this. Together is a two-way street.
Okay, folks, I think we've we've heard a lot of of our concerns. It's uh we do need to to realize that we are all on the same team. Sometimes it's difficult. It's a it's a difficult situation we're in. There's a lot of anxiety. So if and no one has any objections, I would like to vote on this. Okay, I see none. Kathy Hawke, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
No.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellen Boss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that emergency ordinance passed with six to one with Councilmember Bird opposed. The next one that we would be taking up would be uh
one seventy five.
An ordinance, uh yeah, one seventy four, right? AB twenty twenty one seventy four, I believe, is the uh
That's that's correct.
Okay, and the title is amending the Lockham County twenty twenty budget, request number ten and the amount of three million dollars. So I would entertain a motion on this emergency ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Uh Councilmember Brown moves. Councilmember Donovan seconds. Discussion, Mr. Ellen Boss.
I was raising my hand to make the motion.
Oh, okay, motion's been made. We're in a discussion. Mr. Brown.
I I'll yield to Mr. Ellen Boss and then I I want to discuss.
Yield to Mr. Ellen Boss.
So.
I'm fine. You can make the motion and second it.
It's already the motion and second over there. The motion and second are in place, so you guys are yielding back and forth. So Mr. Brown.
Okay, um so recorded as ever, as you wish, Mr. Ellen Boss did make the motion first a couple of minutes, five minutes ago. To speak to the motion, I'd say the following is, my understanding is that we may need to expand um facilities outside of Bellingham. And I just want to remind everybody, it's essential that we pass this to enable us to have that money available should we need to do things up at the um uh the assisted living facilities up in Blaine or in Linden um or to provide congregant care or isolation in places like Southern Valley and um uh the East County. So we we need to be nimble. We don't know what's going on. My concern is that we could have a couple living in a small house, single, you know, one bedroom apartment, one kitchen. One of them gets sick, the other one has underlying health conditions. Sorry, one of them tests positive for COVID, the other one has underlying health conditions. This allows the two of them to be separated so that both can survive. So I'm really hoping we can get this through.
Mr. Ellen Boss.
My request is that people haven't been working two months pretty much on this. And we haven't spent every single dollar we've allocated to strictly the homeless population in Bellingham. I want to know what we're doing for the homeless population in Sumas, in Ferndale and Linden. I want to know what we're doing for the people that um may soon be homeless in Sumas or Linden or Ferndale because they can't go to work. Um I want to know what the plan is for the rest of the community because quite frankly, I think we've done a very, very fine job on taking care of the homeless population in Bellingham. Now let's let's start focusing on the rest of the county.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I think there's a misconception here about the homeless population in Bellingham. I I support what Mr. Ellen Boss is saying that we need to take care of the homeless. I, I support what Mr. Ellen Boss is saying that we need to take care of the homeless in all sections of the, of the county and we need to take care of the vulnerable, whether they're currently homeless or not, or whether they're effectively made homeless because one of them in the household tests positive. But I, I've spent a lot of time directly dealing one-on-one with the homeless in this community. And many of them frankly come, that, that, you say, well, where did you come from? And they say, well, I was born in Linden, or I was born in Birch Bay, or whatever the case may be. Well, why are you in Bellingham? Well, because that's where the services are, because there's not adequate services in that community. So a lot of the people in Bellingham are actually originated. They're our brothers and sisters, sons and daughters, but they came from places like Linden and Blaine and the East County. So let's just remember that, please.
Other discussion on the motion?
Barry.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Thanks. Um, you know, we approved the, the additional million last time with the assumption that Bellingham was going to put in half a billion and, and so there'd be an additional 1.5 that was going out on top of what we had done before. And what came back was, hey, we're going to spend 1.3 million of that on Motel Six and on a location for the homeless. All the documentation does say that it is dedicated to the homeless segment in, in Bellingham. It to me, it kind of feels like, hey, we just maxed out everything that you gave us and now we're coming back for more versus, versus actually looking at it and figuring out how that money was going to be broken down and spent. And it, it, it's too much of a correlation between what we approved and what actually came back. And, and that's too different than what I recall hearing last week as far as the general numbers as well. So it bothers me from that extent that we, we're going to put money out there and it seems like we're just going to push to spend or budget for that whole entire amount and then ask for more and that we don't have that clarity of where it's going. But the other thing that really, really just frustrates me a, a lot and makes me, it makes me sad and angry inside at the same time is that for weeks now, I've been asking that we do something with the senior living facilities and these people that have not tested positive and are not symptomatic and that for all we know are healthy and why we can't rent a hotel and take those healthy people out of there and put them in isolation in the hotels until we know whether or not they have it. And I've been told that we can't do that and that we can't do that and that we can't do that. And what's happened instead is that more senior facilities are getting sick, more people in those facilities are getting sick, and more people are dying. And those people, they're, they're by far the most vulnerable. I mean, they're by far the ones that are going to, that drive the largest amount of impact on the resources if they do get sick. They're by far the ones that have the least amount of control over their lives and what's happened to them at this point in time. Why is it that the first million and a half went to creating a facility for the homeless and not creating a facility for these people? How many homeless have died? How many homeless have even gotten sick? We haven't heard any numbers from that. I can tell you how many facilities we have here in Waukem County that are seniors and nursing homes that are sick and have populations in it. I know roughly the number of people that are quitting from facilities because people are sick inside of them and they don't, they're not wanting to come back and handle that. I know how many people are dying from that. I know the number of people and how fast it's spreading, but we're not addressing that problem. And there's no plan to address that problem. I've asked for that for how many weeks now? I've sent that via email for how many weeks now? I mean, that was sent back originally on March third, March fourth, March fifth. I mean, I sent almost daily emails to us as a group and to the executives office and to the health department. And so the first plan comes back and it spends almost all of the money that we have on dedicating to the homeless. And now we have Bellingham High School that we're paying $400,000 for bringing in pizza and lunch and dinner. We have a private hotel that we're buying, mini fridges and microwaves and outdoor patio setting equipment and chairs for, that we're out there, we're buying cigarette butt dispensers for them to be able to smoke onsite at the high school and at this facility. And quite frankly, Tyler, you know, I did appreciate finally seeing the letter that you signed here the other day that said that we would not be spending money on purchasing cigarettes. But that was a request that did come through, whether or not someone wants to make fun of me on social media about that or not. It was a request that came through. And my understanding is here we have a respiratory disease that's killing our country and that we're fighting and that our health department is still out there trying to find a private organization to supply cigarettes and donate them since now the letter says that we won't spend our, our publicly funded dollars on them. And so am I frustrated? Yeah. Do I understand the strategy? No. Do I agree with how we're spending the money right now? Absolutely not. So am I going to support this? I won't.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Bird, I'd just like to, just like to ask you to step back and look at the economics. If, if we have people in facilities, whatever those facilities are, and they could be a private house, it could be a, you know, a group home, it could be an assisted living facility, or whatever the case may be. If we have 10 people in a facility, in a, in a building and one of them tests positive, does it make more sense to move the nine out and find alternative accommodation or to move the one out and find them alternative accommodation? I think it's the latter. And that's what Motel Six is about. It's about taking people who've tested positive and moving out of whatever their current accommodation situation is and putting them in a facility where they can be supported and monitored while they go through the period of being positive. Some of those people are homeless. Yes, that's true. The problem is, is if they're not taken care of, they will end up in the ER room and then they'll take up hospital space, which is much more expensive and much more critical that we keep available for the, for the, any anticipated surge. So I actually think the proposal that the, the county health department has been promoting is actually consistent with the very philosophy you've been talking about. So I'd ask you to just, I'd ask you to consider that as the economics.
Any other discussion, any other discussion on our motion?
Yep. Uh, Councilmember Brown, I, I hope that that's true and I would love to see it because you know that I have suggested either option as an option. Whichever is the group that's easier to move is the group we should move, but we should absolutely separate them. Unfortunately, outside of what I was told today via Erica and your, your specific comments, all of the documentation suggests that this facility is dedicated to homeless. It, nothing in it suggests that we're using it for other individuals. It's listed in the IAP software, not as a isolation or quarantine site, it's listed as a homeless shelter. And so what I, it's being worked on, not by the isolation and quarantine or the surge teams, it's being worked on by the teams addressing the homelessness, this population. And so everything that I see from an action standpoint says everything to the contrary of what I've heard today, but I certainly hope that you're right. And I'm hoping that we'll get reports back and we'll know how many people in there and are coming from the other populations and what that looks like because it would make me feel a lot more comfortable and I know that it would make the people in our community feel a lot more comfortable as well.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, look, there's no question that there would, there will be homeless people in that building, but there's also no question that there'll be other people in that building who don't have any other alternative that is going to provide them with a reasonable chance of survival. So I'm concerned about both groups. I'm concerned about all the citizens. I'm not going to discriminate against homeless and I'm not, and, and I'm not going to deny the non-homeless access to that facility. So, you know, we, we have, the, the thing, the thing within a pandemic is, this is the one time where everybody is completely equal. Everybody is equally vul- vulnerable potentially and everybody is equally potentially a carrier. So it, to me, we, we have to serve each of the citizens equally and, and put aside any consideration about what their originating circumstances are, because that's the only way we also vote. We have to, we have to stop the spread amongst 100% of the population.
Yeah. And I agree with you. So I'm not sure how I came across to saying that we shouldn't be or discriminating against any one group. My statement is really being directed at the fact that the documentation and the actions to date say something other than what the verbiage has said to us. And if the follow-through is related to the verbiage, that's fantastic. But if it's related to the documentation and the actions, then that's not treating everybody equal. That's treating a lot of people in our community as unequal to another group of people. And so let's do it. Let's make it equal for everyone and hopefully we'll get reports back on what people are actually in there and how that facility is being used in the future. Heck, maybe even someone will unlock my account so I can log back in and get access to the IAP software as the policy advisor and, uh, see what's going on again. But that's the whole transparency and partnership thing as well, isn't it?
Any more discussion on our motion? Seeing none. Uh, Kathy Hawke, please call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner? Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes six to one with Councilmember Bird opposed. Um, anything else on, uh, COVID-19 update? Did, uh, Treasurer Oliver, did you have anything you wanted to, uh, report? Nothing? Okay. Uh, anything else on that? We can move then to AB 2020-157, which is, oh, excuse me, AB 2020-117. Any other discussion of strategies, uh, for the, for this crisis? Any other thoughts? Ms. Kirschner?
Uh, do we have any, um, indication from administration on, um, how this is going to impact the county from a budget perspective? And do we have any, uh, guidance or recommendations on how we're going to make up what looks like to be two of 12 months, a one-sixth of our county revenue this year, uh, due to lack of shopping, VNO tax, property tax, Canadians, people working, defaults on loan, et cetera?
Uh, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive of Brad Bennett and, and myself are still working on that for an update to council at a, at a, at a future meeting. We'll be back to have that discussion with council as soon as it's ready.
Okay, because every day that goes by, it's going to be a bigger emergency. I'll just lay that on you.
Anything else for, uh, strategies on the COVID-19? Okay, we'll move into our agenda then. Uh, we have, uh, AB 2020-157, request authorization for the county executive to award bid number 20-15 and enter into a contract between Waukem County and Granite Construction Company for annual hot mix, uh, asphalt pre-level work on lummy reservation in the amount not to exceed $436,003.05. Uh, Tyler Schroder, or someone, can you walk us through that? Yes, Tyler Schroder.
I think that, uh, the Public Works Group is out at the remote shop location and can give some background to it.
So this contract is part of the critical path for our summer pavement preservation program. Apologize, I'm Gina Miller, Assistant Superintendent at, uh, Maintenance and Operations. And this has, uh, one contractor doing a pre-level for us in advance of our chip sealing operation this summer.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Barry, I'm going to move to hold this until such time as we have an updated budget from the council or from the executives office.
If that means a second, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to hold. Um, is there any time constraints on this? Could anyone enlighten us on that?
There is time constraints. The paving has to be completed in advance of our chip sealing operation that begins the week after the Fourth of July. If this work isn't completed prior to that, then our, our chip sealing would have to be held up as well.
Mr. Brown, then Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, just clarification, I'm not sure if Mr. Schroder can answer this question or not, but my, my understanding is that the, uh, a lot of the work that we do on the lummy, right, lummy reservation land is tied to a contract for the renewal of the ferry terminal, um, lease, and we have an obligation to do this as part of the ferry operations. Is that, am I correct, Mr. Schroder?
Uh, Tyler Schroder, I'll let Gina answer that. My understanding is that this is separate from that, but this is our standard road fund program moving forward.
Tyler, your statement is correct.
And to follow up, is the road, uh, but these, these are, what, what are these roads? These act, these roads are accessed by county citizens, aren't they?
Yes, they are part of the county road network.
Yeah, okay. I, I won't support holding it. Obviously, we'll go through the vote.
Uh, Councilmember Donovan, then Councilmember Kirschner?
I think my question is just answered. These are road fund dollars. So...
Correct.
Councilmember Kirschner?
Uh, can road fund dollars be used for other services in the county?
No, they cannot.
Can it be borrowed and put into a different fund for services?
I believe that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, our, our road fund dollars, that comes also from our gas tax, correct?
A portion of them, yes.
Okay. Anyone have any idea on how much gas we've lost in the last month or how much we are projected to lose over the next two or three months as people stay home and don't go to work and as Canadians don't cross the border and purchase gasoline from us?
I don't believe we know that.
I don't believe we know that either. So, nor do we know that what the impact is to suspending the fees for restaurants and bars or for businesses or for properties and permits or the lost revenue in permitting or sales tax at this point or in pushing back the property sales, uh, property taxes. So isn't it prudent for us to have an idea of what the holistic picture will look like knowing that we are seeing significant declines like we've never seen before in the history of our county before? I mean, should we know what that looks like before we go spend this money?
I don't hear anyone answering. Uh, Mr. Brown, then Mr. Donovan, then Mr. Ellen Boss?
Um, a question for Public Works. Could you give me a ratio of what, what does it cost us to fix a problem early versus letting it wait for another year? And then the cost to fix the same problem because, for example, pothole that grows, you get, is there a sort of a rough rule of thumb?
I can't give you an accurate dollar estimate, but I could tell you from experience that deferred maintenance can turn from an inexpensive maintenance project into a more expensive, longer duration capital project.
But that's what I would have thought.
Mr. Donovan?
That, that was part of my question. And, um, so I guess I'll flip around a little bit. As far as, you know, let's assume the road fund's going to take a hit. We know it's going to take a hit, a big hit. How high on the priority, uh, list of things that we want to get done this year with the road fund would the chip seal program be?
Great question, Todd.
I would say it ranks probably third with our summer maintenance activities.
What are the other two?
Uh, road paint striping and fish passage culvert replacement.
Mr. Ellen Boss?
We've got a few general comments to make. The first one would go to Tyler Bird's question. I, I don't think it's any secret that I'm fairly in tune to the oil industry for the last 20-some years. And I'll say, because I've, anecdotally, because I've seen it, um, published in newspapers, so it's probably not protected information, but I've never seen refiners cut rates for anything other than, um, maintenance issues or safety concerns. Um, I've never seen them cut rates because of a lack of demand. I've never seen them cut rates because of a lack of demand until now. And nationwide and worldwide, we are seeing that. Another bit of information I'd throw out there is when you look at, Gargat gave us information about border crossings where the average Saturday and Sunday is 11,000 crossings and we're down to 285. And then we hear from, we hear from our treasurer about real concerns over not, not not being able to make our bond payments because there's a real concern that people won't be able to pay their property taxes. And then we talk about the issues with, you know, people not being able to have their restaurants open or build, you know, residential construction shut down right across the line. We've all seen it. And then on top of that, and I don't know, maybe, I don't know why it's happening, but people have been reaching out to me. People that, people that don't, you know, I talk about these not being partisan issues, but groups have been reaching out to me, I guess, because they feel like I'm a champ, the champion for, for the average person. Groups that don't typically endorse a dude like me, like the 106 firefighters or Public Works employees. But people have been reaching out to me about just this thing, the chip seal issue, saying, Ben, if we cut anything, cut this. Because quite frankly, we're not doing a great job and doing it anyway, and we can make it up later. So, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know if I can go for this one right now until, until we know what this economic downturn is going to look like. Because it's going to be massive. I mean, I look at the stock market every day and I wonder, how the heck is it not lower than it already is? When I see what's happening on Main Street. And it would behoove us to get our heads around what's happening on Main Street before we just spend, you know, a million dollars moving forward. That million dollars might be critical in six months from now.
I guess I'd ask, there's been a lot of, yeah, Tyler Schroder, I was going to ask you if you, the administration could weigh in.
So Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, I'd just like to reinforce that, you know, the county government is made up of a number of different siloed dollars and, and the road fund is a portion that's there to accomplish the maintenance and operations of our, of our roads. And I would just want to make sure everybody knows that I believe that the road maintenance crew does a really fine job at continuing to do the work that they do every summer and all year long. These dollars will be going to a local company, Granite Construction, for both this item and the next item. I understand the concerns about the, the future budget implications as we move forward. But in corresponding with Director Hutchings, I just want to let you all know that these are very important program and expenditures for Public Works to move forward. They're part of the road maintenance program. And I recommend that even with the concerns and the, and the, and the respect to the concerns about future budget actions, that we move forward with these two items as requested from Public Works Director Hutchings and the maintenance and operation crew that's been on the call today. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Donovan, you had, you raised your hand quite a while ago, you wanted to weigh back in, I think you wanted to follow up.
It was covered, thanks.
It was covered, okay, then it was Mr. Byrd, then Mr. Brown.
Yeah. I'm getting sick of this idea that every time that we, we speak against ordinance or something that's taking place, that somehow that's attached to the people that are doing the work behind it. It has nothing to do with that. We're not saying that people here aren't doing a good job or bad or, or anything else. I mean, if anything, we've made, everyone on this council has made enormous attempts at saying how great a lot of people are doing at their jobs and how fantastic and skilled they are. So, I really don't want to see this anymore because it's, I, I see how it's being construed at the Unified Command Center and other locations and how when we bring up an action, it's redirected as if it's at people instead. And, and that's the wrong impression to be giving, and it really needs to stop happening. I can't stress that enough, it just really ticks me off at this point. So, in addition to that, I don't think that we are adequately understanding the ramifications of what we're looking at or potentially looking at. We're talking about what very well could be the greatest depression in the history of the United States and the world as this goes on. We have never in our life seen unemployment numbers to the extent that we've seen them in the last two weeks and the extent that they will continue to grow in the next couple of weeks and months. We've never in our life seen an entire shutdown of, of all of the restaurants in our state and all of the small business retail stores in our state and those companies that supply an enormous percentage of the jobs that are here. We've never seen people stopped from traveling like we have here or closed our borders to not let anybody in like we are right now. And doing it without any idea whatsoever that's been communicated to what the timeline is here. We don't know if this is May 4th that we reopen, if this is June 4th, if this is July 1st, or if this is September 1st, or if it's next year. How can we possibly be fathoming spending any additional revenue at this point on any project without having some preliminary numbers on what we are looking at? Our budget as it stands now is what, already $50 million? That we budgeted in excess of expenses, in excess of our revenue? I mean, I know it's a budget and you're saying those numbers usually come in differently, but at the end of the day, we've already budgeted way more than what we know we were going to bring in. We've already increased the amount of spending in the past year on additional supplemental items like hiring Sap Paul's campaign manager. We spent more funds on other items and more money's coming. It's just, how do we do that? It makes absolutely no sense. We need to take a pause, we need to take a note from Jay Inslee's book here. He's already come out and cut over a billion dollars in projects. And he's not the only governor or only city or only county to do it. And we haven't even looked at our budget yet. And yet, we just funded another $3 million to a project when we don't even know when we get the money back. I mean, our hope is we get it back, but we don't know when. So, how do we pay for this stuff? You're writing a check on an account that you haven't looked at in weeks. On an account where you don't even know what your paycheck looks like anymore, and yet you're sitting here, we're writing checks. We don't know what's in the account, what's going to be in the account, what's projected to be in the account. Let's be fiscally responsible here, let's try to look down the road, let's try to get a grasp of what this could mean to our county and to our community. Because it very, because it is going to end up prioritizing projects and prioritizing spend. And projects like this very well might have to be cut. And until we know what all of the projects look like and we know what our budget's going to be, we shouldn't be spending funds.
Okay, Councilmember Brown, then Donovan.
So, I'm actually going to reverse myself as a, and I'll tell you why. The, we're looking at contracts, we're looking at issuing contracts that were priced and submitted prior to the downturn. There has been clearly a significant drop in demand for any sort of construction materials, and I think that drop is going to continue. And that is, I think, going to make the market more competitive. And specifically on this issue, there's been a really significant drop in the cost of petroleum products that are used in the production of asphalt. So I think with this, with this project, and frankly, I'll say with any other competitive bidding process that we have taken bids prior to the crisis, we need to frankly reopen those bids and get pricing that is reflective of the current market conditions. Because that's our obligation to get the lowest possible price for our citizens. We shouldn't be running on a post-COVID revenue model and a pre-COVID expense model.
Councilmember Donovan.
Mr. Brown kind of beat me to that one. The question for Public Works and Executive's Office, so if we didn't move on this contract to the 20th, till the 21st, I'm going back, there was something about the Fourth of July, like if this contract, if these weren't approved today and they were potentially approved the 21st after we got some priorities in terms of what might be used with the, with the road fund and where the road fund might be going, is it not possible for the work to be done if we don't approve it today? I mean, or we can still come back to this two weeks from now as part of it? I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Actually, no, the second for that is, if following on Mr. Brown, would there be time to put it out to bid again? Do we, do we, how many contracting procedures that we're running askew if we put it out to bid again? So I guess two separate questions. One is like, if we wait till the 21st, we have more information about the health of the road fund and the, and the public works priorities, could these contracts go forward? So that's one. And then second, if we were to try to put it out to bid again, can we do that? Given the status of these, these bids?
Tyler Schroder.
Yeah, Gina, could you answer the question? If we held for two weeks, would we still be okay? My assumption is that we would be, correct?
If things move through in, in a fashion pre-COVID, I would say yes. With the first single A is due to staffing the unified command, I, I couldn't say yes for sure. There have been some significant delays in purchasing contracts just because of the workload that people are carrying.
It's very difficult to hear you, you're, you're, you're not, can you get closer to the mic or something? It's, it's very hard to hear.
I was saying, my estimate based on a pre-COVID purchasing office would be yes, we could make that in time. There has been significant delays in moving things through purchasing because they are carrying a much higher workload and they're also sitting at the Watkin Unified.
And then Brad, if you're on the line, what would the process be to have to go back out to bid for this purpose?
Brad Bennett, AS Finance, so we do have the right to reject all bids. Since the bids are all put together, we, we probably just initiate a process of bidding again. Has to be advertised two consecutive weeks and then a week to open. So it would be, it'd take about three weeks to redo it. The purchasing section is pretty busy right now, but I think we could do that.
Councilmember Donovan.
So what was the other issue about this goes way back, the Fourth of July? Or is there some date by which it must be done? I didn't follow that.
I was just, so Tyler Schroder, if council wants to hold for two weeks, we could come back with additional information about the road fund impact and how these were budgeted and what the, what the, what the fund balance is for the road fund and have consideration in two weeks.
Let me ask Tyler Byrd if he would want to withdraw that motion to hold the agenda item since that's kind of where we're going anyway.
If I recall correctly, my motion was to hold it until we have an updated budget. And, no, that, that's my motion. And I feel incredibly strong that we, we need to treat this seriously and we need an updated budget. We can't be working on a budget here that takes the usual budget cycle and ends up in our hands in November, December for the next two years. We need that information now, we needed it four weeks ago.
Is there enough definition on that aspect of this motion that the administration would have clarity on it?
Not, not really. We can provide some information in regards to the road fund impact in the next two weeks. And just because there has to be consideration and understanding of the way that county budgets are done through siloed funds, and I think that that's what the most important information is for the consideration of this project.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I don't think it's a reasonable ask to ask the administration to effectively drop everything else and accelerate the, 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 the production of the normal biannual budget. Because that's really what we'd ask them to do is to, is to deliver the budget early for our consideration. I, I, but I will support putting this one on hold and re, and putting it out to bid again as I think we should be doing with any contract that is subject, has been impacted by the COVID, the universe in terms of their costs and competition.
Mr. Allen Boss.
I think in order to make informed decisions moving forward, we really need to know what the projections are. I mean, the treasurer gave us a fairly good synopsis of what his feelings were moving forward with, with property taxes and, and such. And so I would really like to see, and, and you know, it wasn't scientific or anything like that, but he did break down for us, you know, this percentage of people pay at this time, typically speaking, out of these funds, blah, 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 right? Which was very helpful for us to make an informed decision moving forward. Until we have, until we can wrap our, our minds around what we think that road fund's going to look like over the next year or year and a half coming out of this thing, I think it's really hard for us to make an informed decision on, on spending funds in the near term.
Tyler Schroder.
Yeah, we can try to provide that by in two, in two weeks, at least estimation of what the road fund is and how that will play out before you guys, before council makes a decision on this.
Councilmember Donovan.
There we go. Yeah, I would support that. I'm not sure if the motion was hold it until we actually have a complete budget. Or just make sure we, we have a motion that's narrowly defined towards holding it for two weeks, getting information about the direction of the balance of the road fund and how this rates in terms of Public Works' priorities. But it's a two week.
Trying to get to so we have some clarity on the, the ask, yes, Mr. Byrd?
The motion isn't for, is to rebuild the whole budget from the ground up like we do with that process. The motion is that we have an updated budget projection, same thing we've been asking for for now over four weeks, okay? So, go through all of the different income accounts we have and figure out best case, likely, worst case scenario for what the losses are. And then figure out how do we prioritize what projects we currently have on the books against those? Or how much of that we have is already contracted and is going to spend that amount of money? And do we have to cut things or not? If so, how much or what's our grace period and how much room do we have for margin of error? How does the $4 million or $5 million we've now budgeted for COVID impact our general fund? And can, what, what accounts can we borrow from in the long run, such as the road fund? Looking at one fund at the end of the day isn't going to help us. It's not affecting one fund, it's affecting every single source of income that the county has across the board, everything. We need to have some idea, it doesn't have to be perfect and it can be refined over time, but you got to give us a picture. And tell me this, I mean, how many people in our finance department are at home right now? They can't, we can't have people working from home trying to figure this out for us?
Councilmember Frazee.
Yes, and along lines with Councilmember Byrd is talking about, you know, we, because the finances, we have no idea what it is right now and what it's going to be for Public Works. Like what are the, we may have to go, maybe this is already done, but as basic as what are the priority of the roads depending on their current state? Like me, I'm not sure if right now we're just, you know, we have a system where we just go through the roads and, you know, it's, this one's up for sealing, I'm not sure. But I don't know if that's what we're doing now or we may, or are you looking at the roads that really need to be sealed and taken care of right now?
Councilmember Donovan.
Still trying to work on what the motion is, it just got really, really long. I would like us to find some way where we can come back to this item and get an update on the road fund. like us to find some way where we can come back to this item and get an update on the road fund and public works as priorities. And that's and deal with these ordinances. And there's, I think Mr. Bird's got a larger question about getting updated information on the budget generally. So I I hope we could separate this out from that and move on to the next one. So can we read what the motion is? Does Kathy have the motion?
Kathy Hawke, do you have the motion? Could you read it?
Yes, the motion from Tyler Bird was to hold until such time as we have a updated budget.
See, I I would speak against that motion and ask for an amended version that brought this back this these two items back to us in two weeks with some updated information about the road fund and public and how these fit into public works department's priorities.
Does do you accept that as a friendly, Tyler?
I'm willing to accept a friendly amendment that provides more clarity if you feel it's needed. But I'm not willing to piecemeal the motion based on accounts and individual expenditures. I want to see something that's holistic and gives us some idea of what the impacts are across the board to everything before we spend anything.
God, do that as a no to a friendly because Todd was pretty specific to the road fund.
And I don't oppose. I don't oppose what Mr. Brooks is talking about. It's just trying to move this one out separately, but.
Say that again, Todd. I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear you.
I I see these as two different issues. I don't oppose the idea that we want, you know, a much more refined look at the budget as a whole. But I was trying to focus on these two ordinances. So I guess I would I would speak against the motion and try to come back with one that's bringing these back to us in two weeks.
Any other discussion on the motion? This Frazee.
I I think if I'm hearing the motion correctly, I would speak against it just because I don't expect in two weeks to have a whole overview of the budget. I I I know people are working on it, but we're asking in two weeks. That's there's no way that could occur.
Between Tyler Schroder and Brad Bennett and the executives to do, is there any any suggestions you can make as far as how holistic of a look we might be able to get in two weeks? I'm trying to try to get us as close as we can.
Yes, let let me do that. I think that this is not something that which we have not been talking about. Actually, if you remember when I spoke at the last council meeting on Friday. And I did bring it up that I have already asked all the department heads to go and revisit their priorities, their projects. But we are our budget for this 2020 is close to $200 million. When we make a blanket statement, let's not spend anything. So what it entails for starting now or in two weeks, we should lay off all 800 people. We should stop everything like, you know, I think that I can understand the gravity of the situation, which I knew four weeks ago and I did articulate last time that I have asked all the departments that please revisit what your priorities are, what how this impact is going to be. And I have already had a meeting last week with Chair, Mr. Oliver, Brad Bennett, Tyler Schroder, myself. We spent more than an hour reviewing what we are heading. And I have asked them that where we will be in September, we should be thinking about that today. But making this blanket statement that let's not spend anything until we have a revised budget is, I think, a little bit not clear.
I mean, that wasn't the question I have. Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt. That's not the that's not the question that I asked. The question that I asked was, can we, what kind of information could we provide back to the council in two weeks? Not redoing the whole budget, not laying off people. I don't think we're talking about that at all. Think we're talking about what kind of information or report can you put together? That that it doesn't go to that length of completely reexamining the budget. Excuse me, let me finish. And I'm just asking, what can you provide that some sort of a compromise or some sort of enough information to get us going? We're just gonna we're just gonna talk from both sides of the room until we can really try to agree on what information is possible to come up with. And how does that fit our needs as council members? I think there's got to be a rationale, a rational answer to that question.
Yes, the rational answer, what Mr. Schroder just said is that we will bring out the information on the road fund, which we can do it in two weeks and 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 sit down with the as you know, the Mr. Hutchings is is working as incident commander, as the relief commander and and other people, we will do that. But I think that I want to work with the council for the whole budget. That was my whole premise two weeks ago. That we are actually really looking at this impact. Just trying to do this in 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 a rational fashion and in a collaborative way that that the the underlying assumption I'm hearing is that that the administration is going berserk and spending all the money and going crazy. We have to stop them. We are already stopped. But please allow us some time to plan. This doesn't with large organization with so many departments, it cannot happen in 10 minutes. That that so, but I to answer your question, Mr. Chair, that yes, we will bring information on the particular item on 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 the agenda right now. We'll come back in two weeks. We'll bring the more insight to share with everybody on the road fund. But I I think I take that advisement very seriously. That whole budget need to be looked at. That it goes without saying. That is my major concern is that that how we can maintain county services. Another thing is the county which spends money, county becomes the actually engine of economic activity. That's what the governments do in time of despair, in time when everything turns down. The governments become the actually the instigator of economic activity. We have to look at from that perspective. If we just not spend any money, we're not doing favor to our community. But how do we spend is the most important thing.
Yeah, so Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, I just was trying to focus the discussion onto the road fund because that's the silo fund that we're talking about. And we can provide some cash balances, some fund balances, some projected a reduction in in collection moving into the future in two weeks for council to consider. And we've already indicated to council that we're going to bring back additional information in regards to the general fund as it relates to cash flow and projections and likely reductions in property tax and sales tax collections for 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 council consideration in two weeks as well. So those are the things that we will be able to bring back forward for council. I I thought it would appropriate for for this item to focus it on the road fund, but we've already committed to bring the general fund discussion to council and we'll be able to provide that as well in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Sado and Mr. Schroder. Mr. Ellenbach?
Yeah, I think I appreciate executive that you've given direction to for people to look at things more closely. And that's exactly what I'm saying. I'd just like to hear the result of that before we before we proceed. And just as a side note, to think that our county within good times with their $220 million budget is is going to be the economic driver that takes us out of this is is really short sighted. I mean, when the ag community is way, way more of an economic driver than our county might be. I mean, you look at a facility in the Cherry Point industrial area, they're spending more than that, way more than that, just one side along.
Mr. Bird?
I'll update that motion to be two weeks, but we made this motion two weeks ago asking for this. I asked for it two weeks before that as well. If it gets back here and it's only the road fund or that's no information being provided again, then I then I'm going to go back to asking that it be held indefinitely until we have updated information. So.
Okay, what I'm hearing is is that we've reached an agreement that they're going to bring back information on what we have requested in the past and plus the road fund in relative to these two projects. And the motion would be withdrawn. And we would just put these two items on the agenda for two weeks with a administration's report. Is that everybody's understanding? Thumbs ups are great. Any other comments on that? Now we have, we do not have a motion on the table. Mr. Ellenbach?
Yeah, let's revisit Councilmember Brown's idea of having some of this stuff go back out for bid if we think we can be more competitive.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to make that a motion. I'll just limit it to this one in particular, but the the price of raw materials for the supply of asphalt has significantly dropped in the last couple of weeks. And so I'd like to put these two contracts back out to bid.
And that's that's a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second. I'll second.
I think Tyler Bird was first, so motion by Brown, second by Bird. Discussion Tyler Bird or Tyler Schroder, sorry.
I I guess I would just ask the council to hold on that motion until we can provide a little bit more background as it relates to timing of that. If the motion passes right now, we'd go back out to bid and that may make it that we wouldn't be able to accomplish this work this summer. I understand that there could be some cost savings, but I also want to understand that we'd be limiting M and O employees for work in this summer and maybe have a consequence of not providing the local company in the construction business oh, about a million dollars in 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 a contract. And so I just ask council to maybe consider that after we can provide some more information and and have that in the next in the next council meeting.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I I I hadn't considered, but I do respect the fact that if the material is not there, then the M and A's M and O staff may not be able to work. That being said, and I'm just trying to thread the needle here to to be responsive to both issues. That being said, if the contract is released as it is now, that local vendor who is eligible to rebid going forward, that local vendor is going to get quite a windfall because their cost of raw materials is going to be significantly lower than it was when they bid the contract. So and that that is that is money that is going to be funded by every other taxpayer in the community.
Councilmember Donovan.
I think we just heard that it would take two four week periods. So my worry is unless we change the bidding process and rules, which I don't, I don't know if we can, maybe we can. That's a question. But it under normal circumstances, if we put this back out to bid, we were just told it'd be four weeks or eight weeks. What was what was the before we could move forward?
Brad Bennett?
It 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 takes at least it takes three weeks, at least three weeks to do it. Usually we do it in four.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, my concern is if we wait for Mr. Schroder to come back with information and then make a decision to put this out to bid, we've effectively delayed it by further two weeks at least. So that's why I'd like to put it out to bid, rebid it now.
Mr. Schroder?
I understand that, but you're also making a decision without fully understanding the consequences to it.
Yeah, fair comment.
Mr. Ellenbach?
We've been doing that with a lot bigger budget items than this for a while now.
Other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenbach?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Could you tally that for me, Kathy?
Some point of order. This Kathy Kerschner.
Oh, okay. Yes, Kathy.
Point of order. Can you restate that motion? I I I thought I was voting on something. Maybe I'm not voting on what I thought I was.
Yes, of course. Let's let's reset and restate the motion and we'll start the roll call over. Mr. Brown?
Sorry, if you can restate the motion.
Please. Please restate the motion.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were asking Kathy to restate it. So my motion, my motion was to to rebid what would be AB 2020 dash 157 and AB 2020 dash 158. To rebid both those contracts.
Okay, is everyone clear?
Can you please do those separately?
I will make a motion to rebid contract expressed as AB 2020 dash 157.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Kathy, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenbach?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
I believe that passes 4-3. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yes, that's correct, 4-3.
So my second motion is to rebid AB 2020 dash 158.
I'll second that too.
Any discussion on that one? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenbach?
Yeah.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
I'll vote yes since the last one passed.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Kathy, what was that tally?
That passes 5-2.
Okay. Tyler Schroder?
So from that tally, my understanding is that council's asked to rebid both of those. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So then really we don't need to hold the other items for two weeks. We'll just bring back the 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 bid document in the future after we've done that.
That makes sense. Mr. Donovan?
We would still want. I mean, if it comes in a couple hundred thousand dollars cheaper, a hundred thousand dollars cheaper, we still have the same situation of wanting the information about the road foot and balance and how this project fits into the priorities less to the public works.
Understood, understood.
All the provisions of
We just can't bring that other item.
All the provisions of our last discussion are still valid and good. Okay. All right, moving on. All right, moving on, um. We are at AB twenty twenty dash one four seven, request authorization for the county executive to enter an ever local agreement amendment between Watcom County and the city of Bellingham to remove Yakima County Jail and add Kititas County Jail as a correctional facility utilized by Watcom County. Uh, I don't know who said first, I'll go with Ellenboss.
Move for approval.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Frazee seconds. Discussion. Please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Uh, on mute, Red.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously. Um, okay, we are on to, we've already done the uh resolution for the proclamation. We are introduction, we have four items, do we have a motion to introduce, Mr. Donovan?
I was gonna move to remove two items since we've already dispatched it.
You can do that.
Uh, so I moved to remove AB twenty twenty one six eight and AB twenty twenty one six nine.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Donovan, a second by Brown to remove items three and four from the introduction. Um, discussion. Does the administration want to weigh in on that?
One moment. Yeah.
Yes, administration, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say rather than uh, I would like to request the council that rather than removing it, you should leave it on there because in next couple of weeks, we would know what the situation is with COVID surge or everything. And council can vote not vote for it, or we can take it off the agenda. But it regularly takes two weeks to to go through the process. I would like to make a request that I think that's introduce it and leave it on there. And that would be up to the council to decide on it.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna withdraw my second because I support Mrs. City's comments. If we don't need him in two weeks, we just drop him.
Right, I withdraw my motion.
Here's no motion on the table, Mr. Ellenboss?
I make a motion to withdraw, no blank checks. If if you need money, we've proven that if it's if it's needed, then it then it gets approved. This is just a blank check for three million dollars if it stays on the agenda.
Do we have a second for Mr. Ellenboss's?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, Mr. Brown?
It's it's not a blank check because it's still gonna pass a majority vote by the council.
Other discussion? Please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Red Brown?
No.
Four noes, three yeses.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to add for introduction what has now been assigned uh AB twenty twenty dash one seven three, which is an ordinance establishing a process for information to be disclosed to the Division of Emergency Management, the County Executive, the County Health Board, and the public during a public health emergency. And everybody should have a copy of that in their inbox.
Is that a move to, is that a motion to add?
It's a motion to add to introduction.
I'll second that, Mr. Ellenboss?
Since you were a co-sponsor, I was gonna second it.
You can second it, that's fine. Mr. Bird?
I'd actually like to move that that passed today as an emergency ordinance.
I'd have to have a legal weigh in on if it meets the criteria.
Well, I think it possibly does, but it doesn't have the necessary language in it uh to make it one. It you would have to actually add an emergency finding to it and designate it an emergency ordinance in order to do that.
Could we retool that and bring that back uh in two days?
Uh, I believe so.
Uh, I think Mr. Bird was first and Mr. Ellenboss?
Very supportive of that.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, we don't want, do we want to just amend it right now adding a warehouse statement that the executive has meant uh, you know, may have made an emergency proclamation or or are we all right doing it on Thursday?
Mr. Brown?
So I'd like to leave it for introduction in two weeks. If we can get it as an emergency on Thursday, then we can remove it.
Okay, let's let's have a contingency then, I would suggest. Have it retooled so it could be immediately uh run through as an emergency if that's what we decide in two days. Otherwise, we could just let it go through the introductory process, that sound good? That gives us both options. I'll take that as a yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Now we have five items for introduction. We still do not have a motion to introduce. Uh, Ms. Kerschner, you were first.
Um, I would like to um, I'm not sure if this is the right way, but I'd like to introduce the agenda bill or do we have to um, okay, what I want to do is reconsider Agenda Bill twenty twenty dash zero four six that we took action on in January to approve ninety three thousand two hundred and two dollars for the executive to fund the community outreach facilitator position. I'd like to um reconsider that vote. Does this go on in the introduction, Karen, or is it something separate?
No, I don't. I don't know, how was that originally adopted?
It was adopted at council meeting on two eleven twenty twenty. It's Agenda Bill twenty twenty dash zero four six.
And it was an ordinance? Is that correct?
It's an ordinance amending the Watcom County budget.
And no action has been taken on that ordinance?
Yes, we passed it and I'm I want to reconsider it.
I guess my question is, no action after you adopted it has been taken?
No, there has been action, I want to reconsider.
I'd say, uh, Mr. Schroder?
Uh, Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, I was just going to let the council know that a position has been hired associated with that. If if my limited knowledge of what Councilmember Kerschner is proposing is.
I think that's correct.
Um, give my
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in light of that, I don't think it's appropriate to reconsider uh the ordinance.
Okay, well, I'd ask the administration to reconsider the decision to spend that money in that position at this point.
Okay, so we are sitting here with now five items on the introduction docket and I'm looking for a motion to introduce. I saw Mr. Donovan with his hand up first.
Uh, part of the vote.
Yes, Mr. Brown, go ahead.
We didn't, I'm not sure precisely, but we didn't actually vote on adding that item to the introduction list. We had a motion, a second, we didn't vote on adding it to the introduction list.
On on number five?
Yes.
Kathy Hawke, can you give us some clarity?
Uh, we didn't, did not vote on adding the that additional item yet.
And can we read into the record what that item is again, please?
Uh, it is AB twenty twenty dash one seventy three, establishing a process for information to be disclosed to the Division of Emergency Management, the County Executive, the County Health Board, and the public during a public health emergency.
Okay, we had a motion and we did have a second, is that correct, Kathy Hawke?
Yeah, I believe I have a motion by Red Brown and a second by Barry Buchanan.
Yes, I do remember seconding that, okay, uh, any further discussion on adding that item? Seeing none, please call, oh, Mr. Ellenboss? You're always late on your hand, buddy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to say, I think that was, I I think your ordinance is excellent work, Councilmember Brown. Uh, I look forward to working together on that one.
I totally agree.
Second that.
Okay, please call a roll.
Thank you.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes seven, zero. Now we are at the uh, we need a we need a motion to introduce all five items. Mr. Donovan?
Motion to introduce, oh, sorry.
Second.
That's okay, Ms. Frazee's motion.
Second.
Donovan seconds. Discussion on this motion. Please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
That passes five to two with uh Councilmembers Bird and Kerschner opposed. Um, we have another item here, uh, we've been
I think it was Ellenboss and Bird opposed, wasn't it?
Isn't that what I said?
No, you said Kerschner and Bird opposed.
Oh, yes, you're right, it was, it was Ellenboss and and Bird, sorry. Um, we've had some requests from the various boards and commissions about uh when they can meet, when they can't, uh, can we do some clarification? I'd like to read a motion into the record uh that would could do that. And if I would move that in compliance with the Governor's Proclamation twenty dash twenty eight and the consultation with legal counsel, I move the council suspends all meetings, including meetings held remotely of county boards, commissions, and advisory committees unless, one, the agenda is necessary to novel coronavirus COVID nineteen response or the agenda items are routine and necessary as defined by the updated uh Open Meetings Act, general guidance from the Office of the Attorney General of March twenty six twenty twenty. This motion will remain in effect during the duration of the proclamation. If a board, commission, or advisory committee holds a meeting that meets both requirements, the agency should should provide public notice on its online agenda of how the public may remotely attend a meeting, listing the details such as call-in phone number and access code or login instructions. So in other words, they would have to go through all the same kind of process we go through when we do our meetings. So, Mr. Ellenboss?
Oh, I guess was it moved and seconded yet?
That was, that was my motion, yeah. So I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Brown seconds, Mr. Ellenboss?
Who makes the uh designation on whether it fits your one or two?
I I would say in this case, legal has provided a lot of guidance on this and and those two items specifically. So Karen, I would, I would turn to you just to ask, uh, could you answer Mr. Ellenboss's question?
Well, I I I'm not sure who will make the decision as uh as we deal with this, but really this motion just states what the law at this time is. And uh what's happened so far, we had a couple committees. Uh, I believe it was yesterday, I saw a couple of agenda items on uh two different committees and proposed agendas that very clearly uh didn't meet the criteria. It will be the very unusual agenda item that uh meets the criteria outside of the Board of Health or council meetings. So um, you know, I'm I'm perfectly willing to uh assist in making that determination. Um, but I, I mean, ultimately, uh, I I can't really say it's my call. I I think it's up to you to decide whose call that is.
Mr. Ellenboss and Mr. Donovan?
Can I make, uh, because I can't support it without um somebody making the decision. So could I make a friendly amendment that the council chair will make that determination?
I'll accept that in consultation with legal. Mr. Donovan?
So I I seem like, I I've got the agenda for the life act meeting tomorrow and it didn't necessarily look like it was related to things that would fall under that. But this would only apply to executive appointed and council appointed commissions, so it wouldn't apply to things like, look at my calendar, WTA board meets Thursday, that's not covered by this, or the Northwest Clean Air Agency is Thursday. Those are, those are not covered.
Outside of our scope, yeah, Tyler Bird?
I don't know if that actually falls outside if we do it as the health board. It it seems like we could make that countywide as the health board within that jurisdiction as a policy and code goes. Um, I would, it 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 sounds like a good motion. Um, is it possible that since we're meeting in two days, we can have that written up and then vote it on on Thursday with everything else?
That's fine with me. Yeah, I don't know if there's any, are there any boards and commissions, Dana, that are are pounding at the door for an immediate meeting?
Life act, please.
Sorry, um, yes, Life Act, I believe, has a meeting scheduled tomorrow, is that correct, Todd?
Tomorrow at six thirty, um, we're doing it on Zoom.
Jill Jill has been in contact with them to let them know that this was going to be a discussion item for today. Um, and there have been, there's been a lot of confusion about whether or not boards and commissions can meet. So this, I I mean, I'd like to get this taken care of sooner than later. If it has to wait till Thursday, I think you should make a decision possibly about the Life Act meeting, just because they are scheduled to meet tomorrow. You could make a decision outside the the bigger um process, that would be probably a good idea.
Can can I just
Thursday?
Oh.
Go ahead, Karen.
Oh, that's okay, um, can, I just wanted to interject. Reason for the confusion is because at the beginning of all of this, uh, you passed a motion that indicated that uh meetings would be canceled until they could be held remotely. Well, during that time period since then, the governor has has um taken action to suspend certain portions of the Open Public Meetings Act and impose limitations on meeting agendas as a result of those suspensions of some pretty important public participation provisions. And so whether, I I I I hope Dana doesn't mind me saying this, but whether you pass this motion or not, it is the current state of the law. So this motion just reflects what the current state of the law is.
Okay, thanks, Karen, Councilmember Donovan?
I'm ready to just pass it now.
I am too. Any other discussion on the motion, Mr. Ellenboss? Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Ellenboss?
So pass it as amended, um, to, to say that council, or the chair will be the one who makes the, okay.
Yeah, I totally accept that as long as it's with, in consultation with, with legal.
And I am all over this issue.
Any other discussion? Mr. Donovan?
I just, I misspoke. The WTA board meeting was canceled for Thursday.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. That is the end of our agenda. I have two other items just kind of for information where we're, we're trying to kind of figure out what's going on. One is the heat, uh, Peace Health Tour. Uh, Kathy's been working with, uh, potentially maybe setting that up virtually or, uh, there's still some questions around how we might do that. Uh, the other thing is the, uh, five county regional, uh, council slash executives meeting. That's kind of still churning, wondering, uh, what's going on with that. Just wanted to keep those in front of you to know that, uh, they're still on our plate. Um, other than that, I have nothing other than, I did send out a, a proposal for a schedule. I didn't want to really take that up today. We are meeting Thursday. I just wanted you to look it over. We were trying to find, I remember last week, we were trying to find some sort of a compromise schedule, uh, that would be, work better for staff and, uh, work better for our operationals, kind of syncing up with the operational periods. That was why I thought, you know, being on an every eight day schedule might get us there. Again, I don't want to discuss that today. I'd, I'd like to bring it back, uh, Thursday after you've had a little time to think about it. But the, the idea there is, uh, we had talked almost, we almost had some consensus building last week that maybe once a week is the right number. Uh, we didn't come to any agreements on it, of course, but this, this would get us in the realm of one week if we were every, uh, eight days. We do still have to meet our obligations to meet on Tuesdays like today that are regularly scheduled council meetings because that's, uh, we have to fulfill the needs of the charter. I love your friend there, Ben. So I'll, we'll, we'll bring that back on, on Thursday, kick it around. Um, I guess I wanted to, uh, have Dana weigh in on what she needs as far as, uh, she's gonna need some agenda items and things to populate legis, the legislature, uh, with, for the agenda. So Dana, can you, uh, give us some guidance on that?
Sure. So what I have on my list here for Thursday is, um, Red's proposed ordinance as an emergency. I have the discussion of future dates for the special public health meetings. And then, did you want to have some sort of a health department update on Thursday, or you just want the council's COVID general strategic item on the agenda?
Councilmember Ellenboss?
I, I guess my thought would be if they feel like there's anything they need to communicate with us, then they, you know, have a spot for them, but um, I think as we've defined roles and, and communication, uh, networks and, and flow that, um, uh, it probably isn't necessary unless they feel it is.
Okay.
I have the same thought as you did, Ben, that we could kind of leave that on their shoulders and if they have an update they want, or something they want to provide to us, they can certainly have a spot on the agenda. Okay, with no other business on the agenda, uh, I'm looking around, see if there's any last minute hands. Ben, you got one down there? You ready to raise or, go ahead?
Um, I'm just looking at the chat here and Dana had AB twenty twenty dash one seven three and I, I don't have my agenda up in front of me. It's behind this screen, so did we take care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
That was, that was Red's item. So we're good.
Okay, everybody. Everybody have a good evening and we shall see you again on Thursday at one PM. We are adjourned.